We'd like to call this made in order, roll call.
Mrs. Scott. Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Penarello.
Here.
All present.
Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. The board will hold an executive session following this meeting Tuesday, February 27, 2024. The topic will be legal.
Mrs. Moyer, are you ready to present our BCTC students with some acolytes?
I sure am.
All right.
So I'm excited tonight. We have a big crew. Both the Berks County Intermediate Unit and Berks Career and Technology Technical Center play a vital role in the day-to-day operations of Boyertown Area School District and in the lives of our students. Tonight, our recognition showcase proudly features programs and competitions from both organizations and just a very small sampling of BASD student achievement within these organizations. Where's Megan? Want to come up here with me for a second? This year marked the BCIU's 7th Annual Student Artwork Showcase. Mr. Stout, if you could throw the picture up on the screen for me, please. The showcase is part of their acknowledgement and celebration of School Director Recognition Month. This year's theme was meaningful connections. One piece of art from each Berks County School District will be on display in the BCIU boardroom through the end of 2024. In addition, the artwork will be highlighted on their virtual gallery and on their YouTube channel. Megan Eastburn is this year's featured artist from Boyertown. Her drawing shown here is called "The Exchange." To quote Megan, "This drawing represents the meaningful connection between myself and my friend that I met through our school's foreign exchange program. I call it 'The Exchange' to represent the program that brought us together and the chance exchange of a look that caused us to become friends." I am pleased tonight to present to you on behalf of Mr. Brophy, our BCIU liaison and the BCIU itself, a framed copy of your art. It is beautiful. So, congratulations. I'm gonna have you stay here. All right, so I'm gonna have Megan stay here with me for a minute while I call all the rest of you a little closer. I did shower this morning, all right? So if you can come on up a little bit, I just want a chance for everybody to see you. So, in 2324, 227 students attend BCTC from BASH. Each month, the organization shares highlights with their partnering or their participating districts, and each month, Boyertown has multiple reasons to celebrate. From recognizing their Students of the Quarter to their Honor Society, to all of the competitions BCTC students compete in, our students consistently succeed as part of their programs. Tonight, we would like to recognize some of their accomplishments. In December, BCT Diesel Technology, so who are the kids from BCTC Diesel Technology? Okay, so they competed at Pennsylvania College of Technology's 3rd Annual Diesel Competition. Students tested their skills in 11 industry-sponsored stations ranging from air conditioning and basic electricity to hydraulics and suspension. BCTC Heavy Equipment Technology and Diesel Technology competed against 10 other Career and Technical Centers from Pennsylvania. BCTC Heavy Equipment competitors came in first place for the overall school, winning $5,000 in training aids for their program. The Heavy Equipment Technology team includes two BASH students, Ethan Dieroff and Braden Richard. BCTC Diesel Technology team came in 3rd place for the overall school. The Diesel Technology team includes Blake Patton, who is a 12th grader. Individual winners included Ethan Dieroff in 1st place in group 31 battery configuration, Blake Patton 3rd place in power take of setup, you can tell I don't understand what they're doing exactly, Braden Richard Heavy Equipment Technology 3rd place in fitting, ID, and hydraulic pump overhaul, and 3rd place in precision measuring. Also in December, over 150 students from nine Career and Technical Centers participated in the Skills USA District 4 competition. So who are our Skills 4... okay, awesome. Skills USA is a United States Career and Technical Student Organization sending more than 395,000 high school, college, and middle school students and professional members enrolled in training programs in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations, including health occupations. Competitions at this year's District 4 event ranged from presentations, written tests, and hands-on skills. 37 BCTC student teams placed in the top 3 of their competition. First-place students will be advancing to the Skills USA competition in April. Our BASH winners include Aiden First, 1st place in building construction, Jonah Mininger, 1st place electronics technology, Mackenzie Moyer, 1st place electrical construction wiring, Chase Longenberger, 1st place industrial motor control, Jessica Atkins, 2nd place commercial baking, and Kelton Diamond, 3rd place in plumbing. So, like I said, our kiddos have a wide variety of opportunities available to them, not just in our buildings, but beyond our walls as well. And so tonight, we just wanted to take an opportunity to celebrate a group of you. You represent an illustrious group of kiddos who are doing fantastic things within the district and beyond our walls. So congratulations to all of you, and thanks for being here tonight.
I always love to put you guys on the spot before you walk away. Does anyone want to be a spokesperson to talk about their experiences at the Career Center? I do want you to know that we do keep an eye on how you're all doing out there, whether it's through the communications that we receive from Dr. Stauffer, celebrating you all and the accomplishments, and all of our students that are there, along with, you know, when Mr. Updegrove, Mr. Roger Updegrove comes back and reports on the accomplishments of our Boyertown students. So anybody brave enough to talk about any of their experiences? Okay, please.
Okay, so, um...
What's your name?
My name is Aiden First. I placed 1st place at Regionals this year. I had to do some carpentry, electrical, and plumbing. And I placed 1st place last year also. I didn't get to go to States, though, unfortunately, so this year is another second chance of that. I don't know, I had a lot of opportunities at BCTC. There's a lot of connections that you get to make there, and a lot of friends that you just haven't, like, you didn't realize that you were gonna meet before. So, I just, I recommend it to, like, a lot of people, anyone that's, like, interested in, like, anything, like, tech savvy, or just building, or anything, like, hands-on work, or even just, like, ah, sorry, it's kind of on the spot right here, but...
So far, so good.
But, yeah, just like, anything that, like, relates to outside of school, you can really get into at BCTC. There's, like, a lot of opportunities you can get, so, yeah.
Now, have you had the opportunity to be working in the house at all?
Yes.
Share a little bit about that.
So recently, we've been doing carpentry. Just yesterday, actually, we put on the roof trusses. So I was there from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, just building roof trusses. We finished the whole roof. And next, I think, is sheathing the roof, so, yeah. I have pictures on my phone, I think.
One more question about the house. Now, is this house under construction for one year, two years? How many years have you had the opportunity? Each year at the Votech Center, the students do build a house. Not every year, I believe that it is over a span of a couple of years.
Yes.
And, you know, fortunately, the students get to have hands-on opportunities. That's what I'm inquiring about, the house that's not far from the Career Center that they, you know, build.
Yeah, so every year, we try and get at least most of the house done. During COVID, it took a while just because we, a lot of the students were virtual and everything, so we weren't allowed, we weren't able to just get there all the time. So the last house we built sold for, I think, around almost $600,000. So, and then this year, we already, of course, we already finished pretty much all the framing. It took a while for the last house. It took almost three years instead of, like, normal 1 to 2. So hopefully, we can get most of the house done this year and maybe finish it next year, so...
Any of your peers here also work in the house at all? Anyone?
I know that the electrical students do, and plumbing, masonry did all of the, like, the foundation and everything. And same with, I think, the, like, the Heavy Equipment Operations kids go there too. I'm not really sure, but, yeah.
That's wonderful. It's just, you can't get any more practical with your experience than, you know, actually, you know, doing your craft there. So, again, just want to congratulate all of you for the wonderful jobs that you're doing. Mr. Stout and I have participated or attended the big BCTC scholarship, not scholarship, but the awards ceremony that is held at the end of the year, and, you know, we look forward to celebrating all of you again. And congratulations and good luck, and I hope that you can come back and tell us how you have, what you accomplished at your next level of competition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Scott, get some naming numbers.
Student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. February has been a busy month at BASH, and we look forward to bringing you some of this month's highlights, including Impact Day, PMEA District 10 Chorus, and our upcoming BASH Hunchback of Notre Dame performance.
Okay, so this month, BASH Choirs had nine students travel to Jim Thorpe High School to participate with 43 other school districts in the PA Music Educators Association District 10 Chorus. We would like to congratulate Emily Wamboldt, Rosie Camper, Eva Palaeo, and Dominic Maldonado for qualifying for Regionals.
In other BASH musical news, this year's musical, The Hunchback of Notre Dame, is rapidly approaching. Last week, the set was brought in, and this week is Tech Week, meaning long hours for the cast. We saw some sneak peeks on the BASH musical's Instagram and can't wait to see the show from Thursday, February 29th to Sunday, March 3rd.
All right. Also this month, juniors that applied for the National Honor Society were notified of their acceptance. Over 70 students will now begin the process of earning 28 community service hours with a variety of opportunities ranging from assisting with Preston's pantry to the Bear Challenge. We're looking forward to the induction ceremony this spring.
On Thursday, February 22nd, BASH's Impact Club hosted Scott Haight and Katie McLaughlin for BASH's 3rd Annual Impact Day. Students participated in team-building activities, small group discussions, and formed connections with other attendees. Impact Day gave students the chance to voice their opinions, build relationships, and learn more about bettering their school environment. Impact would like to thank Mrs. Bergiova and the BASH admin for making Impact Day a success.
Okay. And last month, we shared the story of Luis Maradiaga. We are happy to share that his GoFundMe has raised over $10,000. On March 7th, Boyertown Area School District staff, students, and community will celebrate Luis Day by wearing their shirts designed by him. As well as purchasing t-shirts, community members are encouraged to visit Dairy Queen, which will donate 20% of the profits made between 3:00 and 7:00 PM on March 7th.
Thank you all for listening. We look forward to sharing our next board report. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
Public comment period number one, Alicia Terizzi. Just a heads up for everybody, in light of the amount of people that are gonna be speaking tonight, we are gonna be enforcing the three-minute rule.
Is this on? Yep. All right. My name is Alicia Terizzi. I'm the head field hockey coach at the high school. You know that we, you already know a lot of this, but we have gone above and beyond to provide our girls with what the district has not. And you know what really terrifies me? It actually keeps me up at night, that when I retire, if this is not fixed, the girls will go back to the same exact situation that they were in three years ago. And it isn't fair to the future coaches and athletes in Boyertown to have to continue to do what we've been doing for the last three years. I know you already know this, but I will remind you that at the current time, the field hockey team plays all of our games on the road. And I will ask you, are you okay with that? Every practice is also away, and we have to pay for turf. I'll ask you, are you okay with that? I had a player leave the team this past year because she had AP courses in the afternoon, and with our schedule and having to leave school early multiple times a week, are you okay with that? If the property values in this district drop because people do not want to move here because we don't have facilities that are on par with all of our neighboring districts, all of our neighboring districts, I'm gonna ask you, are you okay with that? While I am speaking specifically about field hockey, let's remember that this turf will help all the athletes at Boyertown. It will allow our band to host competitions, us to run camps, and make money by renting the fields to youth and club teams. I got into education to help young adults with their development academically and athletically. And my question for you, is that why you are on this board? And I sincerely, sincerely hope that your answer is also yes. If that is your answer, then I implore you to do what is right, the right thing tonight, and vote to provide our students with current and future with facilities that are on par with what everybody else has. Stop acting like we are asking for something that is over the top and outrageous, and provide facilities that are equal to all other schools in the area. The time is now to do what is right, and you guys have the power to fix it. Thank you.
John Amy.
Turn it off. There we go, okay. Yeah, as is my usual practice, I'm probably gonna say enough to piss everybody off in the room tonight. I want to say upfront, I'm not against turf. As a matter of fact, I know for the field hockey and lacrosse teams especially, PIAA rules pretty much tie their hands. They have to compete with turf, or they have to key in on turf fields, or they can't compete. My problem with this is how this is being presented and how this is being done, not by the parents, but by the school board itself. And again, it's being presented, at least it was presented last Tuesday night, is we can do this, and we can do this without impacting tax dollars. This isn't true. If we fund turf to the fullest, we're going to be spending $7 million of the capital reserve fund. That's true, we have that money in the reserve fund this year. Once you spend it, you gotta replenish it. You gotta get it back up to the 2% to 4%. That's gonna happen really fast if we spend $7 million in one year. I haven't heard a whiff from this school board, or from our finance director, what impact that's gonna have on other offerings that the school is trying to have. And as we know, the past several years, we've been struggling just to offer the basics. We've been struggling just to maintain what we have. Over the past five years, our professional staff is attrited by 7%. And part of this is because of the school board passing budgets that continuously underfund the district for what it needs to do just to maintain. You've left $5 million on the table the past three years. You pass deficit budgets every year when you have the ability to do more. And tonight, you're gonna try and offer turf as a freebie, while once again, when you present your budget, you're going to present it with a budget deficit. I want our parents to have everything. I want them to have what they need for the best education. This school board has to stop thinking year to year. It has to stop thinking, what's the bare minimum we can get by every year just to make sure our school funds? If you're gonna vote for turf, you better vote to pay for it, and you better vote to make sure that all our other educational opportunities are not further attrited and actually enhanced. If you don't do this, then everything you're doing tonight is just theater. And I hope that a few years from now, we're not having to come here and you're saying, we're facing such a deficit that, you know, we may have to cut lacrosse and field hockey, the sports we just put the turf in for. It's on you. Stop fooling around. If you want to fund things, if you want to have things, have them, but properly plan for them and properly fund them.
Pam Warnersbuck.
Good evening. My name is Pam Warnersbuck. I come to you as a teacher, an educator, a taxpayer, and a parent in this district. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. The proposal for turf for our district is once again in front of the board this evening. I'm here to speak on the impact of not having turf for the high school girls' lacrosse program, but please understand that boys' and girls' lacrosse, as well as boys' and girls' soccer and field hockey are all impacted in similar, if not the same ways. Again, practices need to be moved indoors due to weather or field conditions, so as not to destroy the grass for later on in our season, which tends to happen daily, causing a lot of schedule shuffling for parents to be able to transport their young children. Practicing in the gym as a field sport leaves us woefully unprepared for actual contests against opponents, as we cannot replicate the actual size and transitional piece that needs to happen in our respective sports. This places us at a severe disadvantage to the majority of our opponents who have turf at their fields, or at their schools, excuse me. Games are affected in numerous ways. We have to reschedule and move locations to find a turf to be able to play. Many times, our teams are left to play three to four contests a week, which is extremely taxing on these athletes and detrimental to their physical well-being. Academically, we impact these athletes because of the amount of lost school time due to having to travel frequently to turf facilities, as well as the inconsistent times that we need to practice due to the impact of weather, which affects the student-athlete's time to do homework and study outside of school. There also needs to be recognition that the installation of turf is not only about specific athletic teams. It would also benefit the marching unit and the high school educational offerings, specifically physical education, but not only limited to that department. We also open up the possibility of hosting postseason neutral site availability for athletics as well, which we already do for both baseball and softball because we have the facilities. This would also bring income into the district and into the community. We also have the ability, then, to also cater to our own youth programs by having them rent the turf as well. Ultimately, as a school district, we need to put our students in the best position to be able to succeed, and that is our responsibility in public education. By not having turf facilities for our students to use, we have created a barrier to student success. We are not setting these students up for achievement in the way that they are capable of and are so desperate to work to attain for you, the community. As a board, you're in the difficult position to be stewards for the public in regards to school district decisions. The need to weigh progress and forward movement of the school district and student needs, coupled with financial concerns, should be weighed with much diligence and looked at from many perspectives. Thank you again for your time and dedication to our students. We look forward to moving forward with this.
James Brinkman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Jim Brinkman. I address you today as both a passionate advocate for our students and a parent of two young children in the district. It is with great conviction that I urge the approval of the turf fields in our schools, especially considering that we are the sole district in this surrounding area without this essential facility. Empowering our exceptional athletes, our students are exceptional, both on and off the field. They demonstrate dedication, skill, and a strong work ethic. They deserve a facility that matches their talent and dedication. Turf fields will provide a high-quality playing surface that can enhance their performance and allow them to compete at their best. Closing the gap, by investing in turf fields, we have the opportunity to close the gap between our district and others in the region. Providing our students with equal resources and opportunities will not only benefit them individually, but also elevate our district's reputation for excellence in athletics. Versatility for multiple sports. Turf fields are versatile and can accommodate a wide range of sports. This multi-sport usability ensures that the facility will be utilized to its fullest potential, benefiting a diverse array of student-athletes and community members. Parental perspective. As a parent of two young Boyertown students, I understand the importance of providing our children with the best possible opportunities for growth and development. Turf fields are not just about sports, they are about creating a supportive environment where our children can flourish and thrive in a responsible manner. As a district that prides itself on excellence in academics and athletics, it is essential that we provide our students with the necessary resources to thrive. I urge the school board to consider the significant impact that turf fields can have on our students, athletes, and community. Let us join the ranks of surrounding districts and provide our students with the facilities they need and deserve. Thank you so much for your time.
Tammy Merriman.
Thank you, school board members. My name is Tammy Merriman. I'm a resident, taxpayer, and mother of two current BASH students. I have a son who is a senior and a daughter who is a freshman, and I'm a member of the Lady Bears Field Hockey Team. I grew up 20 minutes down the road and attended a small school called Ole Valley. I'm sure many of you are familiar with this school. Ole is a quarter of the size of Boyertown, with taxes a lot less than what we pay, yet somehow, they figured out the importance of a turf field many years ago. In fact, they just currently had to redo their field since they had it for so long, and they aren't the only ones. Almost every school around us has a turf field, if not multiple fields. It's embarrassing. I know you've seen and heard a lot from the field hockey team, but the turf field is a multi-use field that will benefit many teams, soccer and lacrosse, just to name a few. With increased usage time compared to grass fields, all teams can benefit from a turf field. Athletics is an extension of the classroom. We should be providing the best resources to our student-athletes in order to help them excel. You have all heard multiple times how much the hockey team has to sacrifice just to be competitive at this level. I know fundraising was mentioned. The hockey team has no problem fundraising. We currently have to fundraise just to practice on a turf field. Give us a reason to fundraise. We all know this won't happen overnight. Get the process started. Vote yes to a turf field. My husband and I would love to be able to walk with our daughter for her senior night on a field at the school that she actually attends, but mostly, I would love for my daughter and her teammates to feel the pride of playing and winning a game on their own home turf. Thank you.
Paula Brophy.
Good evening. My name is Paula. I live in Douglas Village, where all residents are on social security and probably Medicare, but some still have to work to make, just to make ends meet, so we can't have these taxes raised. The issue of turf is being fought for about 214 sports kids, when there are about 6,600 in the district. The amount of $7 million for about 214 kids seems ridiculous. That breaks down to around 25,000 to 30,000 a kid who will not even be here after a couple of years. The cost of turf, $8,000 every year for upkeep, $500,000 to replace every seven to 10 years. Is this cost going to remain the same in seven to 10 years? Will that turf last that long? Also, there is disposal fee for turf, should it need replacing, for toxic waste disposable. What about the runoff of the chemicals from turf? What else will it contaminate? There is a 22-page Inquirer article that contains information of the chemicals of turf and the dangers of them. It also contains information regarding the NFL removing turf and going back It also contains information regarding the NFL removing turf and going back to grass because of injuries. The Phillies are doing the same. They had six players die from the same kind of brain cancer. I don't think six dying from the exact same kind of cancer is coincidental. This board has been very spend-free on the taxpayers' money in the last year and a half just to get what they want and not for the good of the whole district. I know you can't please everyone, but this is no time to use a lot of the capital funds for about 214 out of 6,600 kids. The money could be better spent improving our facilities to assist in education. The economy is in sad shape, and there are people in this district who cannot afford food, let alone a tax increase. I think more research is needed before we put any undue risks to these kids. My grandchildren are more important to me than caring to a few. I will oppose letting my grandchildren play on turf. Thank you.
Is this already on? Okay. Dear school board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. I'm coming with a different perspective. As a local realtor, I am very much invested in the well-being of our community, and I'm here to advocate for the addition of a turf field to our school sports complex. While the primary beneficiaries of this enhancement will undoubtedly be our students and athletes, I wish to discuss a secondary benefit that maybe you haven't yet realized. This should really resonate with everyone. The positive impact on property values within our school district. Investing in our school infrastructure, particularly in facilities that directly support our students' extracurricular activities, is not only a testament to our commitment to their holistic development, but certainly a catalyst for enhancing property values throughout our community. Investing in our school sports facility sends a clear signal to the community that we prioritize our students. Families considering relocating to our district are not only assessing the quality of our academic programs, but also the overall environment in which their children will learn and grow. A modern, well-equipped sports complex, including a turf field, enhances our district's reputation and attractiveness, thereby bolstering property values throughout the area. Studies have consistently shown that well-maintained and upgraded schools correlate with higher home values. Families are willing to pay a premium to live in neighborhoods with top-tier educational institutions. And investments in school infrastructures such as a turf field, and this will contribute to the overall desirability of our district, which, of course, again, translates directly to our property values. On a weekly basis, I engage with families who are prospective home buyers, many who have children. One of the first topics they raise is the school district they are willing to consider when searching for a new home. Parents meticulously scrutinize what each district has to offer, thoroughly researching before making any decisions. As you are well aware, information regarding the decisions made by our school board permeates through various channels, including news outlets, newspapers, and social media platforms, and they do influence those contemplating moving to our school district. In conclusion, please consider how investing in a turf field for our sports complex is not only an investment into the athletic department and well-being of our students, but also a strategic decision that will positively impact property values in our community. By just demonstrating our commitment to excellence in education and curricular activities, we position ourselves as a desirable destination for families seeking a high-quality living environment. I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of this investment and vote yes for the turf field for our students, our community, and our property values. Show the community how much our students mean to us.
Good evening. Is it on? There you go. Good evening. My name is Jackson Goslin, and I am a Boyertown area school district alumni, a music teacher in the Lower Marion School District, and an employee at the high school where I assist in teaching the marching band, and I am here to urge the school board to approve funding for turf fields at the high school. Installing turf fields would give the members of the marching band opportunities that I would have envied during my time as a student. And as I've learned tonight, opportunities that the field hockey and lacrosse and soccer teams absolutely deserve. Turf fields are easier to maintain, which, my understanding, as an educator, as part of the marching band, the maintenance is one of the primary reasons that the marching band does not get the opportunity to use the stadium as much as they realistically need to. I, as an educator, I always told my students, some of them in the audience tonight, to practice how they perform, and yet, they are unable to be in the space where most of their performances happen. The ability to use the stadium would allow for the current and future generations of students to be more prepared and successful for their performance opportunities. I would also like to share a personal anecdote about my experience. From 2015 to 2019, I was a member, I was able to tour as a member of Drum Corps Associates and Drum Corps International. And for those of you who are unacquainted, it's like the major leagues of marching band. And in 2019, on my tour that spanned from the west coast to the east coast, I was able to perform 30 times in various states. Of those 30 performances, exactly three of them were on grass fields. Turf is the standard for the marching arts, and during that 2019 tour, the one time I ever injured myself during my performances was when I stepped in a divot at the Rose Bowl in Pasadena, California, and hyperextended my hip, where I was unable to walk without a limp for the next two to three weeks, constantly performing in an activity that requires constant movement. So I would like, once again, to ask the school board to approve the funding for these stadiums to give our students in Boyertown the experiences that they deserve.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm coming here a couple of different perspectives. One is, from a youth perspective for sports, I do coach youth sports, and I just want, I was here before, really just want to remind you that we are a way to have the community help support and maintain a turf facility should you choose to vote yes for it. But primarily today, I want to talk about being a property owner in Boyertown. I'm a Boyertown alum. I stayed in Boyertown. I want my kids to stay in Boyertown. But to Kim's point, we need to have the facilities in place to keep people here and to bring people here, and to keep my property values up. I do have parents who are also on fixed incomes. I appreciate absolutely what a tax increase could do for them. However, if their property values go down when they are ready to sell, they may not get what they need to continue to care for themselves for the rest of their lives. So I implore you today to think about everybody, not just our athletes. I'm an athlete. I'm a field hockey player. I want turf for field hockey and for the other sports band. But I want better facilities for our districts for all of our community.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys, and I appreciate it. I want to give you my perspective. My name's Bill Goddard. I'm a '79 graduate at Boyertown. I am the girls' soccer coach here at the high school. I took the job 24 years ago and have been here ever since. Our fields, and I want to give you a different perspective from what we go through, and some of my colleagues have already mentioned. Our fields are directly out the back. We've played on the same field for the last 24 years. It has never been upgraded, other than seeding and cutting the grass. The field has low spots, doesn't drain well, there's a variety of different things that it needs, and it doesn't get it. Every year, it just gets worse. We get rain like tonight, we get stuck in a gym. So our kids are preparing for a game. When everybody else is outside, we can't get out because it's too wet. So that's one of the drawbacks. Wet weather is an issue. We end up in a gym, we end up in a classroom. So being a coach here in soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, we have to be resourceful. We have to be resourceful with what we do because we don't have the bells and whistles that the other schools have, and it's not a level playing field. Our athletic department, I wouldn't want Nick's job for all the money in the world. Turf fields would take a huge amount of pressure off of him and Mercedes. They would be able to schedule things, and they wouldn't have to pull rabbits out of a hat every single day, especially with spring coming. It's going to benefit the entire student body, and it's a huge disadvantage for us because we're playing away games. Everybody plays on turf. I can't emulate that as a coach. I can't do it. It's a different game. There's never going to be an opportune time to do this. If you're waiting for the opportune time, the opportune time, it's never going to get easier. It's only going to get harder. So remember when all of you were first married and you were getting ready to buy your first house or move into your apartment? My personal experience, my wife and I moved into our first apartment, it was $275 a month. Then we moved into our first house, it was $600 a month. And then, to where we are now, in the big metropolis of Gablesville, in the big city, was $950. And each time we moved, we made it work. And at the end of the day, it might not work out the way we want it to, but at the end, it will work out.
Donia Savage, policy.
Give you a break, a different topic. I'd first like to acknowledge really quickly the presentations at the last board meeting regarding student achievement by Stephanie Landis and budget by Patty D'Anicola. Both were very in-depth and informative, and this is what the community expects with respect to transparency and what the board needs with respect to decision-making. So thank you to administration and the board members who encouraged this increased transparency. My policy comment is regarding 903, which the board decided not to move forward to first reading tonight. The proposal made by the policy co-chairs was to restore the ability for community members to sign up in person at the meeting. This means of signing up for public comment was removed last year, citing legal decisions in Pensbury School District. Even though I was on the board through several issues where individuals from outside of our school district sought to speak, including ironically, some troublemaker from Pensbury School District, I think that if you really want this community to believe you're here for them, as you were elected to do, you should allow people to sign up at the meeting. As was pointed out last week, for public comment period number two, it may be difficult to know if you want to speak until you've heard the board's discussions. So I'm asking that you consider other options to reduce the risk, one that has been suggested before. Even though you can no longer ask the person to state their municipality publicly, you can place a checkbox on the signup sheet that the person checks to acknowledge that they are, quote, "district residents or taxpayers, parents/guardians of district students, district students, or district employees," as quoted from your policy. Yes, sure, a person can lie, but it does reduce the risk. And if they elect not to check the box, they can't speak. So thanks for your consideration on this topic.
Hi, everyone. My name's Denise Stettwiler. I live in Gilbertsville. I'm a lifelong resident, a Boyertown alumni, district parent, and a school district teacher. I'm here to advocate for the installation of turf. I have seen the community come together for several significant projects, including Memorial Stadium, Jerry Carver Track, Bear Stadium, and Bear Park. These facilities for years have been the pride and joy of the community, school district, athletic, and music departments, while hosting numerous distinguished events. In recent years, however, I feel Boyertown has fallen behind just about every other school district in the state by failing to provide the student-athletes with the best opportunities possible. I hear many people question, why do we need this? We have fields already. This is like asking why students need laptops when we have a library full of books. Long and short, it gives students access to things they will encounter as they progress in life and gives them the best opportunities available to succeed. Student-athletes are no different, and as a school district, we should want to provide the best opportunities for them to succeed as well. The playing field across the state is not equal. Our athletes are disadvantaged on many levels by missing games, having a significant loss of valuable and adequate practice time, traveling away for most, if not all, games and practices, and having other teams not willing to play games at our facilities. Unlike grass fields, having turf would provide our students with many benefits, including but not limited to increased playing and practice time since there's no downtime after it rains, less game cancellations and indoor practices due to field conditions, and year-round playability at all hours of the day. Other advantages include minimal maintenance costs and less setup time for field preparation, as well as being able to actually play games at home. As a district, we not only have the responsibility of providing the best academic experience, but also the best overall experience to the student body. Historically, our community has had a deep sense of pride for Boyertown schools, as well as our athletic and music departments. I would hope for that to continue in the future. We are at a point where we need to start investing in that future. Please vote yes to turf tonight. I'm also speaking on behalf from a member who could not be here tonight, so I'm going to read a letter from Marcy Topol on her behalf. Dear school board members, my name is Marcy Topol, and I'm a resident of Gilbertsville, a lifelong resident of the district, and a proud graduate of Boyertown School District. I am a former member of the Boyertown School Board, as well as a former state legislator. I'm sorry I could not be there in person tonight to offer my comments, but I am homesick. However, this discussion is so important to me, I wanted to offer my comments in writing. The balance between taxpayer and school spending is always difficult, and the decision to construct turf fields is no different. We entrust you to make the best decision for both the student and the taxpayer. I have heard comments to the effect that athletics are not important, we need to spend our money on academics. I firmly believe you cannot separate the two. Athletics, music, the arts are all part of a child's education. I was a three-sport athlete at Boyertown, as well as an honor student. The extracurricular activities that students are offered are part of a comprehensive education. I learned many life lessons on the athletic field, lessons I used my entire adult life. At this point, I will speak specifically to field hockey, although these comments could be made for other sports as well. I played field hockey, was a captain, named first team All Chess Mott. Boyertown has a long, proud history in this sport, and I celebrate the success the program is enjoying. Currently, our team cannot practice, host a game, or playoff. No one will play on grass. I played on grass, but the entire sport has changed. Playing on grass now would be like playing tennis on a parking lot. As a lifelong fiscal conservative, I understand the reticence to spend money, but your job is to provide opportunities to our students while doing so in the most cost-efficient manner possible. There is now an opportunity to construct turf fields without raising taxes. If indeed the funds are in the capital budget to pay for this project, without depleting funds for other capital projects, I would contend the fiscally prudent thing to do is to construct the fields now. Being a fiscal conservative does not mean saying no to any and all spending. It means finding a way to pay for what you need in the most responsible and cost-efficient manner. I urge you to move forward with the construction of the fields at this time.
Good evening. My name is Christina Wilson. As a parent of two female, multi-sport student-athletes for Boyertown, I'm here to ask you to consider voting yes tonight for turf. There are many benefits for turf for the athletes, but also for the district. Turf is always perfectly manicured, therefore requires less maintenance. Turf is more durable than grass fields, usable in most weather conditions, and also eco-friendly. Turf could attract outside organizations to utilize the fields, which could potentially create revenue. which could potentially create revenue. Lastly, turf lifts school spirit and reputation because more competitions, playoff games, and senior nights can be hosted. Turf allows Boyertown a better chance to compete to their full potential with the schools in our pack and our districts. Imagine how many more district and state titles can be won by our high school if the athletes could practice and play the same way the other schools already do. Thank you for your consideration.
Caitlin Dolan?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Dolan, and I was a member of the 2023 graduating class at Boyertown High School. I'm currently a freshman at Michigan State University, and I'm home on spring break this week. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I wanted to begin with a quote from Coretta Scott King, American author, activist, and wife of Martin Luther King Jr. She states, "It doesn't matter how strong your opinions are. If you don't use your power for positive change, you are indeed a part of the problem." Turf is needed at Boyertown. We all understand and most agree to that fact. You, the members of the board, have the power to make a positive change here tonight. You have the influence to make an impact on the future of your community. I realize that this is a polarizing issue, and you will never make everyone happy. But you have to think, what is best for our school, our kids, and our community as a whole? Tonight, we are on the cusp of something wonderful. During my time at Boyertown, I was fortunate enough to play in three championship games and win two titles. Those banners will hang in the school, and I'll have those memories forever. Those were incredible times with amazing people. My teammates, coaches, family, and friends sacrificed and traveled to every game. During my junior and senior years, we played in zero home games. Little girls who played Optimus Field Hockey did not have a chance to see us play at Boyertown. Grandparents had to drive to Owen J. Roberts to watch us play on senior night. We played away every game, but embraced the challenge. We even had T-shirts printed to glorify our bus-driving coach and our underdog, home-wrecking mentality. It worked for us, but we missed out on the privilege of defending our home turf in front of our home fans. You can only be an underdog for so long. We sacrificed and hoped that there would be a light at the end of the tunnel. I would rather come home from college to watch my sister play field hockey for Boyertown, at Boyertown, than to speak at board meetings. I want to someday watch my mom and dad walk across our field on her senior night. I want to see our championship banner hanging on our fence around our field. This program has come so far in the last few years, and they deserve a home field. I am excited for Boyertown field hockey, but I'm also excited for soccer, lacrosse, football, band, gym classes, and Optimus Sports. All athletes and students at Boyertown will benefit from this upgrade in facilities. Spring sports begin next week, and it's supposed to rain all week. I'm hopeful this is the last spring that baseball and softball are stuck in the gym for weeks because the fields are unplayable. Finally, I would like to leave you with another quote. This is from my favorite movie and legendary hockey coach, Herb Brooks. Before his boys, who were huge underdogs, beat the Soviet Union in the 1980 Olympics, he told them, "Great moments are born from great opportunity." Well, what we have here tonight is a great opportunity for our community, a great opportunity for Boyertown. It is up to each of you to turn it into a great moment. Thank you for your time, and as always, go Bears.
Emma Yan-Kanich?
Good evening. My name is Emma Yan-Kanich. I played field hockey since I was eight, and I love the sport. I play for a club team for field hockey as well. It's not even second thought for my club to play on a grass field due to the disadvantages of grass. Grass is bumpy, slows down ball speed, gets easily affected with weather. Have a turf field for not only field hockey, ball sports that need turf to play would be beneficial to so many of our athletes at Boyertown for a variety of reasons, such as our education, our training, and our time. First off, the benefits of having turf are endless. A few benefits to having turf are that we can play in the rain and other weather conditions due to the fact that turf can withstand intense weather. Another huge benefit that we can have is that we can have home games. Currently, Boyertown field hockey cannot have home games due to the fact that we don't have turf, making it so that whenever there is a game, players need to skip a lot of late-day classes to get to the game on time. I'm not saying that athletes won't miss any classes because of away games with turf, but being able to have home games and not need to leave classes early as frequently as we need to at the moment would be a huge benefit for students to further their education. Also, for field hockey, especially as you get older, you need turf to play. That's why our school has been renting out turf fields to have practice on. But practice for field hockey isn't right after school like other sports. Practice is later in the day, making it so you need a ride to whatever turf field that has been rented for us to practice on. This can cause problems with busier family with transportation. Some students may not be able to have a parent drive them to the field or might not have someone to pick them up. Having a turf field would not fix these problems because practices will be right after school like other sports. We also have a lot of talent when it comes to our athletes here at Boyertown. But I know that our athletes with the correct facilities can be so much more successful than we already are. So all I ask is that you make the right decision. This is so important to so many coaches, students, and parents throughout Boyertown. If you want to make a difference for our athletes, vote yes for turf.
Elise Eves?
First off, I want to thank everyone on the board for considering this project and allowing me to speak tonight. I'm currently a sophomore at Boyertown, and although I have only been representing Boyertown's field hockey program for two years, my experience goes well beyond that. I have been playing field hockey since second grade at a club close by. I have been fortunate enough to be given the opportunity to train at a high-level club with turf fields since a young age. However, many athletes are not given the same opportunity. Four years ago, our field hockey players were forced to play on grass and lost almost every game of their season. Some teams even protested playing us because of our grass fields. Now, because of our amazing coaching staff who have fought for us to play on turf these past three years, we've been able to practice at a local turf field and rapidly improve as a team. We now have an outstanding record, making three-pack championship appearances, winning once, placing fourth in District 1A, and making an appearance in states. Not only does turf benefit field hockey, but it benefits soccer, football, lacrosse, and the band. Turf will allow Boyertown's athletic programs to not only rise within the pack but develop our youth programs such as Optimus and project kids into college programs. Thank you.
Veronica Reiner?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Veronica Reiner. My husband and I are retired taxpayers for the district. We are here to express our dismay about the thought of our taxes going up and to express our concerns about spending 6.7 million to install AstroTurf. We just want to say that we are not against sports. We have two boys who played sports. We know that sports is beneficial in keeping kids out of trouble. But to spend this amount of money on extracurricular activities, it seems excessive. You go to school to learn fundamentals to help you through life, and right now, we believe that money would be better spent helping the kids catch up on their math and reading skills, something that, thanks to COVID, has been deeply affected. Also, I would like to know the percentage of students who will benefit from this expense, which I found out how many kids it does benefit. And is it possible to have taxpayers who live in our school district vote on this in the April primary? Can the question to spend all of this money be put on the ballot for public vote and not up to nine people to decide this? Let the taxpayers decide this? Is that something that's possible? We are seeing out-of-control spending happening with our federal government and also with our local governments. Someone needs to stop and think, where is all the money coming from? Something I would like to comment on from personal level goes back to the closing of Pine Forge Elementary School. I was employed there for 29 years, and there's three generations of my family that attended that school. I have a hard time grasping the fact that the money to keep our little school open and running was not available. Yet, three years later, there is $6.7 million to install AstroTurf. I have a hard time understanding this. I wish I was at the meeting when the subject was discussed. Then I might have the answers to some of my questions. Like, does the $6.7 million include the cost of the special equipment needed to maintain the turf? And there is a list of maintenance that must be done on a regular basis. Which reminds me, something else Boyertown had that needed to be maintained but was not. That was Bear Stadium. Because of the lack of maintenance not done to Bear Stadium, it had to be totally rebuilt, something that was given to the district. And all the district had to do was maintain the upkeep of it, and they did not. So is the maintenance of the AstroTurf something that the district will neglect to do on a regular basis, like the maintenance of Bear Stadium? I guess time will tell. And my final thought, I heard that our tax dollars will not pay for this. I hope not because there's no room in my budget for this, and I'm sure it would be a burden on a lot of other taxpayers. And one other thing that I'd like to say in listening to all of the kids, the people talk, why don't you maintain the fields that we have? Just maintain the fields that we have. You know, I don't understand. There's people that have to know it. So fill in the divots, and then these kids won't get hurt, and they can practice at home. Thank you.
Matt Danner?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Danner, and I'm the current teacher and head coach for the boys soccer team at Boyertown High School. I debated how to best use this time and strongly considered talking about all the ways turf fields would benefit the boys soccer program. And there are many. Instead, I'd rather speak on a more personal level as someone who grew up in the Boyertown community, having lived here most of my life. Growing up in the 1980s, I finally remember the construction of two iconic sports facilities here in Boyertown. Sadly, one of them has since been replaced. I feel a sense of nostalgia when I reminisce about the excitement that occurred in the summer of 1982 as members of the community joined with a willing school district to open one of the premier amateur baseball facilities anywhere in the country, Bear Stadium. Men and women in the district answered the call to action with a collective. Yes, we can do this. That summer, as many of you know, our Legion team won the American Legion World Series in our brand-new stadium. Later in the 1980s, there was a renewed excitement as community members came together and the district, with the district, and spearheaded efforts to build Memorial Stadium. Few, if any, school districts anywhere around had facilities comparable to Boyertown. I remember thinking how awesome it would be to play on these fields when I was older. In terms of district sports facilities built to date, this was the golden era in Boyertown. These iconic facilities were built by the men and women of this community, many donating their time and money. These visionaries dedicated themselves to investing in the students, investing in the district, and investing in the community. Are there differences between the processes that built those facilities and what is being asked of the board now? Yes, I'm not oblivious to those differences. Adopting turf is not just about spending money. By choosing turf, you're making a financial investment to improve our facilities. But even more so, you are making a social and cultural investment in the hearts of the Boyertown community. Some of these benefits may not be quantifiable, but I can attest, these benefits exist. Voting for turf may not be an easy decision, but I believe it's the right one. Members of the school board, the torch is being passed, and I respectfully ask that you take it up. It's time for you to become that visionary. It's your turn to say, yes, we can do this. Thank you.
Stacy Ford?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Ford, and I'm a parent of a BASH member in the band, as well as a member of the Boyertown Music League. I am here to show you, I mean, I'm sorry. I am here to show support for installation of turf fields. As far as having a turf field for the marching band, it would be a huge advantage for the marching band program because we would have a more consistent and smooth surface to play on or to march on. This is imperative to marching and executing their show. As you all know, weather plays a big factor on whether or not the marching band has a productive rehearsal or not. It's disheartening to cancel rehearsal and/or consistently adjust rehearsals' times and schedules because of the poor field conditions. Sometimes, these conditions can last a couple of days, depending on the extent of the elements. These conditions are not suitable for any sports team nor the band. From the marching band aspect, marching in mud up to your ankles makes it extremely difficult to have a productive rehearsal, not to mention trying to move pit equipment, color guard equipment, and props across the field. All these things are part of the process of making the marching band show a success. Losing precious rehearsal time is considered a huge setback for the marching program since they learned many drill techniques, drill spots, and choreography at every rehearsal that builds and builds up eventually leading to the finished product. We unfortunately do not have the option to go and use another facility to practice because of the size of our program and all the equipment that would need to be loaded and transported to another facility. Now, for the side of the music league, every year we host our annual Arlen-Seller Calvakee. This show brings in a good amount of money for the school district as well as for the music league. Mr. Lang has mentioned before that we have been asked to host a Calvakee championship. We cannot even be considered to host a Calvakee championship competition because we lack the turf fields, which is a requirement for Calvakee for us to host a championship circuit event like that. This is just lost revenue for the school district, as well as for the music league, which would be very beneficial to both parties to fund future programs. I don't know if any of you are aware that during the summer, Drum Corps International, which like Jackson said, is a big marching band whoop-de-doo, it happens up in AJ, I'm sorry, at J. Brandy Crumb Stadium, everything. These drum corps come from all over the country, and they look for schools to host their corps for their rehearsals during the week of the competition and for the weekend leading up to the competition. If we had turf fields, we could host a drum corps or two and benefit from these groups using our facilities. This is easy income for us as a school district and for the music league to make some extra revenue during the summer to help offset costs of future programs. Also, hosting a drum corps would also benefit the local businesses during this time because families and friends would be here rehearsing.
Man, time's up.
Sorry. Just please take this into consideration, do what's best for the students, the community, and the school district. Thank you for your time.
Allison Ford?
Hello, my name is Allison Ford. I'm a member of the marching band. From a student's perspective in the band, I would like to say that turf fields would be extremely beneficial to our organization. One benefit of having turf fields is that it would give us a smoother and more consistent surface underfoot while marching since we constantly do not look down at our feet. Consistent service will help all sports teams and the band that use the fields. In addition, turf fields will still let us have the practice after bad weather because a field will have the necessary drainage system versus having multiple mud pits, holes, and standing mounds of water lying on the field. For example, there are days throughout our season this year when Mr. Langdon and the staff had to fill holes with sawdust. This reduced some wetness and risk of injuries, but it continued to be just as sloppy and an absolute mess. Due to the quality of our fields, there's been times where we cannot have rehearsal due to it, being too wet or too muddy. We lose valuable and productive rehearsal time when not being able to practice. Moving equipment and props around becomes extremely difficult when the field is such a poor condition. It also presents the possibility of someone getting injured. It puts a stop to our productivity, and we get behind. Installation of turf fields would reduce the amount of times we have to change and/or cancel practice. Having canceled and/or changed rehearsals puts us at a disadvantage to marching band programs in the area that have turf available for practice. Overall, I feel as if there are opportunities missed that we could have benefited from if we had turf fields. Thank you for your time and your consideration you took listening to me tonight.
Nicole Zelks?
Nicole Zelks, let me start off with saying I believed turf field is long overdue. And with better planning, we could have already had it. with better planning, we could have already had it. Before this vote takes place, I hope we have a complete understanding of what the impact is by spending almost $7 million out of our capital reserve. Again, I want turf field, I do. I'm just, I have concerns about how we're funding it. Last week's presentation, we were told that our capital reserve has about $23 million in it. Projected project expenses of $13 to $14 million over the next five to six years. And then lauding almost $7 million for turf project would leave us with about $3 to $4 million, with this, which is well under the best practice guideline of 2% to 4%. So my questions are, how will we make this fund up, and how long will it take to get us back in line with the best practice guidelines? What happens if there is a catastrophe and funds are needed? I want to support this project, but I also want to make sure we're not putting the district in a dire situation by moving forward. I hope the board can have an honest and civil discussion tonight, and make a decision that benefits the district, the students, and the taxpayers. So, going off my script, I do support turf. I've always said that a good school district is going to be well-rounded, we're going to have academics, we're going to have sports, and we're going to have arts. I do believe turf is something we can do, but I really hope you can have a discussion about moving forward, and whether you decide to do it or not, what that's going to do to this district financially, because these are legit concerns. This is not me saying I don't want my taxes to go up, because y'all know, I've said before, if you got to raise my taxes, raise my taxes. This is not about, you know, it's not a luxury item. There's no doubt that our district will benefit from turf, but we have to have an honest and real conversation about it. So I hope you can all do that tonight. And if for any reason, the vote doesn't go to move forward with turf, I hope you continue to talk about it and find ways that we can move forward, because the students, the athletes, the music department, they all deserve it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathryn Malloy, and I've been a member of the marching unit for three years. I want to speak to you today about the importance of installing a turf field in the Memorial Stadium on the behalf of the students involved in music. From a marching band perspective, it is extremely difficult to spend a multitude of hours practicing throughout the summer on a grass field, only to perform on turf everywhere, everywhere we go. The logistics of marching change significantly when the field surface changes. To see our hard work and dedication go to waste when we perform on a field that we aren't used to, and lose points for something out of our control, like the technique we master on a surface that isn't performed on, is disappointing, to say the least. Many other schools are also able to hold practice in imperfect weather conditions because they have turf. Our grass field prevents us from practicing as much as possible during the frequently rainy fall season, and cuts our potential short. Not only do we risk losing hours of rehearsal with a grass field, we risk our safety. Ruts and rocks can lead to hazardous falls and completely avoidable injuries, not to mention the fact that it is unsafe to make us perform on a surface we only have access to for our performance. I ask you to please consider taking Boyertown in the future with turf fields for the success and safety of marching band and other student athletes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
He never turned it off. Hi, Barb Ferry. I stand in front of you as a parent of a three-sport freshman athlete. He plays football, wrestling, and lacrosse. As you heard from everybody else, we are in need of these turf fields. I have found, I've supported the field hockey team, I had no girls that played field hockey, they were gymnasts, we didn't have to worry about outside fields. I've supported the field hockey team through this as an ex-field hockey player, knowing that the game has been changed completely playing on turf fields. As with lacrosse, we've noticed playing club, playing optimist, and all different, the ball bounces differently, the face-offs are different, the sport completely changes, the pickups are different for scooping up the ball with lacrosse on turf versus a grass field. And I followed all the turf issues back when we built the new stadium, and I was aware that the board shut it down, and I believe that it was over a cost thing, as I wasn't as involved as I am now in the turf fields due to my son being overly involved in sports. I did hear rumors back then that we had business slash people in the community that were willing to give money to the community for advertising. I think that's a huge way to fund some of this deficit that we're talking about. We go out to our community, we offer advertising to them, and we'd be proud of advertising our community businesses and people that want to give back to us. If you notice, there's billboards at Upper Park, there are things at Springfield, and I've talked to people all over, they have been funded or partially funded by businesses and people in the community. That is a huge way to collect back funds. Another thing was when OJR built their fields, I found out from speaking to some of their parents seven years ago, no, maybe even longer, that they paid off their fields in two years, even though their note was for like seven, because they rented them out. Their facility's amazing up there. They've got four fields, three fields, the stadium and two upper fields. They're always busy, and they're always renting out. I know as a fact now, our club lacrosse team pays Perkyomen Valley to rent their fields. Summer, fall, and spring, we play on their fields. That's money we can make. One of the owners of the club works for Boyertown School District, the other one works for PV, guess where the money's going? To PV, and we could get some of it here. I spoke with voter, many voters at the polls in November, as I worked at two different locations. What I learned is speaking to them, that everybody wants to be proud of where they live, and in their district. With that being said, I had conversations with many of the older voters, who are concerned about taxes not being able to afford to update the schools. However, the story I told them, I will share with you all, and I did share in an email I sent out to you all. I grew up in a community in Delaware County, the true suburbs of Philadelphia, in Ridley, where my grandmother and her friends moved from South Philly to a brand-new neighborhood being built. She and her friends lived there until they moved on into the next world. My other grandparents also lived in this community, and my parents both attended Ridley, as I did in my brothers. Anyway, my grandparents found a way to be proud of their area, to pay for the taxes. My parents now still live there. We built a brand-new school district, brand-new school, brand-new high school, pools, and have amazing fields. There is a way to make it work, and we need to find a way to make it better for our kids and the pride in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. My name is Harry Bauer, and I'm a resident and a parent with children in middle school and high school, involved in both athletics and in band. I'm also currently in my 31st year of teaching band in Central Bucks School District, and 12 of those as a high school band director. I'm here to support the installation of synthetic turf at the high school. I think it would be a welcome upgrade for a few reasons, many, many that we are hearing this evening. I have a lot of the same things on my sheet that a lot of other people say, so I'll be brief. Playing and practicing on turf would put our teams and band on par with other schools in the area. From what I understand, all the other schools in our league have turf, and I feel we are at a disadvantage practicing on a different surface than what most of the games and band festivals perform on. I know from band and my many years of experience before turf years ago was a possibility. Performing on grass was always a challenge, because you didn't know what you would get from school to school. So, grass is kind of unpredictable, right? The obvious reasons, of course, it would hold up better during heavy-use times in inclement weather. And specifically for the band, the band shows today require a lot of visuals and a lot of props, and as well as heavy sound equipment and complex percussion equipment that most need to be wheeled onto the field, and turf would make that a lot easier. Back when I was a kid in high school, we didn't have anything with wheels, we used to carry everything around. If you were a drummer, probably many of those guys are in the hospital now. Of course, turf will make Boyertown more attractive to other bands tending our Arlen Sailor Band Festival, but it will also make our band festival organizers in the area attractive to providing or possibly having championships in our stadium. And the last item I wanted to mention is how incredibly proud our students and our community would be of having a turf stadium. And we've heard so many people speak that are natives from the area. I'm from Lower Bucks County. My father came to Gilbertsville, the Zerns, for many years to auction and stuff back in the 70s. I'm quite up there in age myself, and we decided to move here about 10 years ago with my family, because we heard about Boyertown and how great it was. And I want it to continue to be that way, I want to support that, and it sounds like many people here this evening are behind that and are willing to support it as well. So I urge you to vote for turf fields here coming up this evening. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment period number one. At this time, I look for approval of the February 20th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. So, Adam Mills. I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
For discussion at this time, we are going to discuss the recommendation of updating our policy 001, Name and Classification. This came at the request of Ms. Nyman at our last meeting, as this was an oversight of the administration in not bringing this policy up to date as a result of the decennial/centennial census that was conducted last year, or two years ago. So what we are recommending as far as this policy, is that we remove the word "districts" under the voting precinct. Instead, we're adding voting precincts number one, two, three, and four of Montgomery County, and removing under Region Three, Douglas Township, District One of Montgomery County. So that, and then also adding in Districts One, Two, and Three, and under Upper Frederick Township. So this policy now goes along with where our precincts are stated. Mr. Stout, can you please bring up the one policy if you have that on there? You should be able to open it, Ms. Nyman. Mr. Stout does have it up top then.
The only changes are right there in the middle, under the composition of equalization following decennial census.
The Region One should be Boyertown One, or Boyertown One.
None.
Boyertown has two regions.
Okay.
Boyertown One is in Region One, Boyertown Two is in Region Two.
We will make those adjustments.
We will still move it forward for the first reading, knowing that we will be making those corrections. If everyone else agrees, I know that Mrs. Kramer had worked with exactly what was part of how you register to vote, and so she had taken that information directly from there, but we will double-check it. Okay?
Boyertown One is in Region One.
Okay.
That way now.
All right. All right, we will make that change. That is all that I have to discuss with respects to draft policy 001. Next would be the Treasurers' Report. I'm sorry, unless there is other discussion on that policy, I apologize. Okay.
Tonight, I'll be presenting to you a few highlights from the January 2024 Treasurers' Report. For local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $48,381.69. Earned income tax collection was approximately $1,194,163.73. Transfer tax collection was approximately $100,291.45. For state revenue, PDE special education funding was $704,886. Pre-K counts program was $45,000. PDE basic education funding was $440,888.17. Under January expenditures, salaries and benefits accounted for about 79% of our monthly expenditures. And this concludes my Treasurers' Report for this evening. Any questions? Thank you.
Motion to approve the Treasury Report?
On motion.
One second.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the superintendent's consent agenda, the recommended action is for the Board of School Directors to approve the confidential settlement and release agreement for student number 100224, and for the Board of School Directors to approve the 2024-2025 Boyertown School Board meeting calendar as presented. So the motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's report, the itemized agenda, there is a motion authorizing the administration to work with Fox Rothschild LLP on any necessary submissions to Culbrokedale Township for the artificial turf field project. Request proposals from architectural firms for the preparation of plans and specification for project, assistance with the land development and approval process, assistance with contractor selection, and providing customary construction oversight, as well as work with Fox Rothschild LLP on the review and approval of the agreement with the selected architectural firm, and utilize capital reserve funds for the cost arising from the project.
Zawada moves.
Ms. Dieroff.
I heard a lot of conversation tonight about we couldn't play here in our fields, the other teams wouldn't play because we didn't have turf. What happened to, I was told by a couple of coaches, if they wouldn't play, that would be forfeiting the game. Isn't that how it works? They could...
I didn't know I was allowed to, sorry.
Good evening. So, what that is in reference to is, a lot of times when we go to schedule games, a lot of schools, especially if they're non-league schools, they will not, they do not want to come here, because we do not have turf. There are rules in place that PIAA has in place, where being, like for example, for field hockey, the grass can be no longer than one and a quarter inches. For us... than one and a quarter inches. For us to maintain a one and a quarter inch grass field is extremely costly. Usually, we can't keep that up to that measure. So if that would happen, we also need to it's just not an automatic forfeit. It is a we also we have to move the game somewhere else to play it so we can have the proper maintenance of facilities of that field.
So then the fact that they wouldn't play here is not true?
That is not true. Or that is true based upon they will not play here. Non-leagues don't want to schedule with us because of that fact.
Because we don't have turf?
Because we do not have turf.
They don't want to or they won't? There's a fine line there. I'm just trying to find out.
They won't.
So then they don't forfeit their games?
No, only league games would have to be forfeited, but we have to make sure that they follow that the field is properly in line with being one and a quarter inches. And then out of that placement, because usually we cannot keep that, we have to move the game somewhere else.
Okay. Do you need special shoes to play on the turf?
No.
So it's okay for the band to use their their boots or whatever they wear?
Yep.
To play on there? And they can wheel their heavy equipment on there?
Yep.
Nothing's going to stop that?
Nope.
The water, they said they were going to use the same drain pipes we have now. How is that going? And this isn't for you, I guess. But how's that going to be treated to be discharged? Because you just can't discharge that water.
Yeah, that would be a.
Yeah, I said.
Yeah.
Another one of my questions.
Can you pull your microphone down closer to your mouth? Thank you.
So that would be specified in the MPDES report. I'm off. Sorry. That would be specified in the MPDES report. While we would have to treat or if we would have to treat it at all, or what would have to be added to the water. And Jay's over here, and he knows about the water sources down there. So.
So are we getting like the like the state, we pass it, then we read it?
No, they would come out and they would tell us that before you would pay for it.
We're supposed to be voting on this tonight. These are questions I have. They're legitimate questions because that could affect the cost. So once again, is this water is going to be put they said in the same drain pipes we have now, is that going to be treated to be discharged? And where is it going to be discharged? The other question I have was what insurance is that going to affect our insurance, Mrs. Denacola? Is that going to cost more than the regular football players paying we pay for them now?
It should not. Not in my experience.
With all the okay.
Just a full second. Here you go. So.
Well, I didn't know about find out about the water yet.
I can't answer that because I'm not.
No.
Good evening. Jay Clough with KCBA Architects. Stormwater in the state of Pennsylvania is regulated by the Conservation District. They are in charge of all that has to happen to stormwater. And to my knowledge, in all the fields we've done, it's not the quality of the water, it's the rate of release that is. But if there is a water quality issue, they are the ones that enforce it, like they did for your stadium, like they did for your high school, and like they did for all your middle school projects. It's never come to my attention from them, the quality being an issue. It is the release rate. You can't put more in than you used than before you start. And actually, to make up for past lack of practices, normally, when you build a new stormwater system, you must take in more hold more water than before you started. So nobody in this room has that say. It comes from the state, which actually is a branch of the federal government. So it works its way down. From my experience, there's not an issue with all due respect to the newspaper article, it's the rate of release that is being regulated, and that is heavily regulated and will be as it is for every other project you did.
And that's was all figured in on this? We know what that's going to be?
We took again, I'm going to take a leap of faith here. We took at the time, and here's the gentleman help me, the most conservative look. We have not done the two big things that we did mention when I was here in January. The field testing, which means you'd find out what exactly is out there before we even start. Okay, things that are in the ground before we start. That will be required by those same people, the people that ask you ask questions you do. Their first question are going to be, take samples out there and tell us what you got. Most of those samples are not so much for pollution, they are for infiltration. How much of your soil is able to absorb water and how much is not? But that is a mandatory piece of it that would come first.
Okay.
We hope we covered it. We tried to cover it. There was a contingency placed on it. We're going to we tried it at our best bet.
We had gotten an estimate of what it would cost to replace it after the guarantee was over if we had to replace a field. But what I didn't see was any disposal costs because.
I will defer to Kevin who's with.
I understand that can't go to a landfill. That's toxic waste.
Why don't you come up? Don't use the mic.
I'm just trying to get all the figures.
That that replacement costed factor in that disposal removal and disposal of the turf.
That $500,000?
In today's in 2024 amounts, yes. That's what we're anticipating for the projection when the turf is replaced, removal and disposal.
So it's picking it up and disposing it and redoing a new field?
That is correct.
Okay. And what is the estimate time period? Like if we had to replace a field, would we be without the field at all?
No, the competition season would be minimally impacted. Most school districts would schedule that for a summertime period. So when the graduation or the end of the spring season.
But I mean, it's quick.
Yeah, you're talking roughly a 21 to 28 day cycle.
Okay. And the other big question I had was, there was a lot of controversy about us having graduation here again, like we did before COVID. And if the district decided to do that, would they be able to hold graduation on the turf field?
Absolutely. Yeah, you there's no prevention from holding the graduation ceremonies and other activities on a synthetic turf field.
Okay. Okay, I think right now that's that's it. Thank you.
Don't don't go away. So rolling heavy equipment across the turf doesn't affect the warranty at all?
No, it doesn't impact the warranty. The you can't roll a tractor trailer.
How about how about floats and other heavy equipment with wheels?
The banned equipment?
Banned equipment or outside equipment that comes in?
Banned equipment hasn't I haven't seen that void a warranty based on those weights.
So that would be in the warranty that if we had equipment banned equipment moved across there, that would not affect our warranty, correct?
I can look and see, you know, I know that's but no, the banned equipment is not going to be beyond the weight capacity of the turf field.
Okay. So there's also no no restriction on what kind of footwear you can use on the on the field?
The footwear that's used on the field, if we are using it for other activities, it's going to have to be groomed more, right?
It has to be fluffed. I know. I got that.
Yeah, but no.
So different spikes don't matter wherever you wear. Or we're baseball spikes, and that'd be okay.
If you have a more aggressive metal spike, no, there are there are footwear recommendations.
There are restrictions.
There are recommendations on what to wear on the turf fields. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So we have to patrol. We have to patrol that and make sure that people don't go on there with that with without the proper footwear, more or less?
Yes, that's accurate. Yeah.
So that would be that would be an accurate statement.
That's correct.
So I'm really having trouble with telling me that 10 years or 12 years from now, I'll be able to replace that field for $500,000. To me, that's that's a ludicrous statement. You have no idea what costs are going to be from eight to 10 years from now. So I don't I really don't understand how that's even in your presentation.
Putting our best guess.
I'm going to praise my roof 10 years from now. I can't say in today's dollars how much it's going to cost.
We do our our best estimation based off of previous inflationary points. But you're accurate that it is purely an estimate, sir.
Five years ago, a school replaced their turf field as $1 million. So I understand I'm having trouble with your numbers.
There's going to be sub base work impacted there.
I don't know. I'm just having trouble with your numbers.
In the projects that we estimate, and we estimate, you know, 80 to 100 projects a year with current inflationary measures, and you have elements like COVID that had different impact on the economy, those that's my our best impact. And this.
So really, it's a guess. Can I say that it's a guess?
It's an estimate based on our the data that's in front of me. But the one the biggest thing is that we're here, the what's being presented from the board is an opportunity to seek out an engineer to design the field and to seek out an installer. So it's not that they're guaranteeing an installation. It's not not signing that. They're seeking that.
I understand that. I understand. I watched a sales presentation a couple of weeks ago. That's what I watched. I didn't watch I didn't watch a feasibility study. And that's okay. I would expect that because you're trying you're trying to give us turf. So I'm not I'm not shouting you for that. It's that we got we got a sales pitch and for selling turf. We didn't get the pros and cons of of turf. We got here's the greatest thing in the world. Put this in and you'll be happy and walk around smiling for the rest of your life.
Sir, it was an option.
That's not your fault. I'm just that's our fault. That was our fault. And that's and that's I don't need I don't.
Is there a question, Mr. Brophy?
No, there's a statement here, Mr. Panarolo.
Because we're doing statements per policy oversight for 30 minutes.
Okay, can I have a question for the following policies? We have a policy for how many people are allowed to speak at a meeting, correct?
I'd have to go back and look at the wording.
Now, I don't I think this is a hot I think this is a very hot topic, but.
Oh, you mean you mean members of the general member of the general's public?
Yeah.
Yes.
I understand. This is a hot topic, hot topic.
We have to go back to the if you want to talk about the policy about speaking.
Can I can I finish?
Yeah, you can finish. It has to do with this.
Yeah. Well, you're just you're just telling me about following the policy. I want to see that we follow policy. So what I'm saying now is, we let 25 people come up, which is okay. It's a hot button topic. I understand. We should have done it. Wait a minute. I'm not done.
That was still within policy.
Well, that's what I'm going to ask. I understand that you can do that.
Yes.
Don't you at least have to ask the board to do that?
No.
So, Mr. Sultan, is that true?
I'm going to go look at it while you continue to talk.
In the past, we've had to.
I've never ever seen anyone ever do that in the past. I'm following the president. The president's been set. When you were president, no one ever did that.
No, they didn't. In fact, in fact, last time, we actually fought it and had to ask the board, is it okay to speak? So I'm just I'm just bringing this up as far as you want to talk about policy. So we can we can move on. I'm sorry. Go ahead. That's okay. Thank you.
I forgot a question. That's important. On the on the field, when we play different if we are one field and we play different sports, they take different lines. I'm probably saying it wrong.
No, that's accurate.
How does that work? How?
The traditional line packages would be presented, and the school would elect what line packages they would want inlay in the turf.
Give me a second.
So tradition.
Did they get changed that every time they play the sport?
It's the school's decision what packages traditionally you would have, you know, the two different fields were designed for or talked about for for usages. The stadium field is going off, it would have the football line package, where the other field would have the school, you would decide what line packages to inlay in the field. Football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, you decide what you're going to predominantly use in that that venue, and that would be inlayed in into the synthetic fabric.
So then if you played another sport, you'd have to is it like tape or something?
No, there.
I mean, how?
So the the lines, the turf is is cut, and then you have seam tape.
Okay.
Underneath that is adhered.
So how do you change it then to?
It's a when you're designing the field, you have your permanent installation of those line packages.
Okay. Okay. And then the the last thing was, you probably don't know it, but Jay probably does. I'm sorry, Mr. Clough. We got awards for having the best grass fields in Borotown. And they all went, they all went, we got awards from.
Water.
I guess it was funny, but we did get awards from the state for having the best fields in Pennsylvania. So they can laugh or do whatever they want. I was trying to make a comment. The fields now have really deteriorated. My concern is with this turf, if we don't treat that right and take care of it, the same thing's going to happen.
The the maintenance is critical, but the design with the.
That's what I'm saying when they get done laughing.
Design with the engineering group is it would enhance the sub base drainage to maintain the plannarity and, you know, overall performance of the field. So that that's going to be in the engineer and architect's hands to ensure that you have a top notch surface. But one of the perks of of the construction of the full environment would be, you know, that you would be maintaining a very high level of competition and, you know, surface that you have.
Is there some kind of training that comes with that when you get a turf field? Is that automatically come with it?
The manufacturer and installer would have training for the the grounds crew that would be maintaining the field. Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Ms. Denacola, one last question. Can we afford this? In your estimation, you're the business manager, CFO?
I'll go first. In my estimation, what I what my duty is, is to share what we have available and the potential projects that we have. My duty is to provide, you know, that information. The board has the opportunity to vote yes or no on the projects. I can't provide an opinion either way. I'm looking out for the district as a whole, and all of the projects are important for the district. I can't direct the board in their individual decision making, though.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a lot of questions and comments. One being, why are we only getting one estimate? Where are the other ones?
We just were doing a motion to have them do all that.
I want other people to bid on this, not just this firm.
That's what I'm saying.
And.
Okay. Also, I have a lot of concerns because when we did the football field, Dr. Fadley was here, and there were supposed to be things done. However, things never got done. People told us we ran out of money. We have a neighbor that has been dealing with issues for years.
It has to do with the turf field.
And it has to do with that. You want to put a turf field in there?
Yes, it has to do with the turf field.
So our athletic director was supposed to see that netting was all around there. It hasn't been. Still hasn't.
You have to put stuff in the turf field.
Well, no, turf fields.
Bring the other stuff up in the comment here. You can.
Turf fields, this needs to be in this bid. If those nuttings need to be in this bid as part of it, not as part of the contingency, because contingency can be used for a lot of other things. So if we're going to do a turf field down there, that netting, whatever it's going to cost to do, needs to be part of this bid.
So if they decide to put netting in that bid, you're going to vote for it, right?
I can't say that. I have a lot of other questions right now. I have a lot of other questions and concerns. Financial issues, because we have buildings that we need to maintain. And you people can laugh all you want, but our buildings are in bad shape. So also, in this bid, I don't see anything about stadium seats.
What do you mean stadium seat?
Are you going to put seating there for the for the people to sit on?
The seating's in the stadium. But these are directions you would talk to them, not me. I'm not building it.
Well, for the new field that you want to put, where's the stadium seating? You don't want people to come out and watch you and sit there? That's a good question. I'm sorry.
We'll get everybody settled down. The study was asked of us by you as a board. I'm sorry. The study was asked by you as a board for us to investigate putting artificial turf on a number of fields and options to do that. We were not asked to investigate the need to do extra seating or any other changes. You are voting tonight, not even for me, by the way, I have to compete with somebody else to see if we can get a job here, to design the project. You can at any time in the design of that project, make your wish list and agree as a board what it should be.
But I've seen wish lists before, and all of a sudden, it gets to a price, and then they they say no more. And then after it's done, oh, well, we need this now. We need that now.
That would be.
Ten years of doing this isn't happening anymore.
I understand, and again, that's you're you're very astute.
I'm learning.
You're very astute. That is how the world goes around. You make your wish list, the design team, whoever they are, who's fortunate enough to work for you, designs it, and then you get the prices in the real world. Doesn't matter what he thinks, doesn't matter what I think, ultimately, it's what the contractors think. We try, when I get the job, if I get the job, we try to put in alternates, as we have for all your projects over the in and out of here over the last 20 years, so you get some choices at at bid day. Absolutely, the high school needed to get more work. When we were hired, our firm, the other firm was dismissed because they were like $25 million over budget. As a board, we worked together and we bought what we could for the monies we had. And yes, things are left out. So back to where I started, the purpose of the study that was required of us by the board, and we did compete with other firms to get that right, to give it to you, was what are the implications of taking one, two, or three fields and turning them into artificial turf? You can expand beyond that to do anything else you want as you get your proposals. We did include, there was a talk about footwear, as we do with all fields, we did include a fence around the stadium has its own, you're done, but field one was shown in those cost estimates with a fence so that you can control.
How was the fence?
Pardon me?
How high was the fence?
I don't even know how high, what, six, eight feet, whatever. Again, it's an estimate, you can make the fence as high as you wish. It's not a, it wasn't a netting. It was not what you're talking about for for balls. It's not the netting you want. That can be added as part of your wish list. It sounds like it's important, that would be added to the.
It definitely is because I've gone through enough grief over that.
I understand. There's a rest of it's not happening.
And I think I quit Mrs. Torsha through a lot and.
It certainly.
Mr. Shield.
We certainly understand.
Yeah. But no, the key component is the numbers, that that package in front of you, you have, those are numbers just for a presentation. Now you have an architect and you're going to have other contractors that you solicit that you're going to agree to. You're not agreeing to numbers on on that paper. Those are just estimates based on industry average for performing those scopes of work in this wage environment. That's it. So it's everything that you want.
So the numbers could be higher or lower?
Those numbers are on the the higher side for the estimate in this wage environment. You will then, as a group, design the appropriate stadium that you the the board agrees to. You're agreeing tonight to talk to an engineering firm and get bids. That's all you're.
Okay.
That's what they're voting on.
Okay.
I don't have all the design elements. We haven't designed the the full project.
Okay. All right, then, you guys are probably done. So we have 23 million in our capital projects and everybody wants to say we need to make sure that we have enough money there. Well, 3 million something is already put down for capital projects that are already in that presentation. I received an email tonight saying, and we have not discussed this, sorry about that, Mr. Shield, New Hanover Upper Frederick is having issues with their roofing. So that on the one thing is like 1.4 million. Boyertown Elementary, 55 years old, 55 years old, has not had anything done to it. My understanding, the heating over there is not working properly. We had an issue one day where you had to go find a part. Parts are either hard to find or very expensive. So with that being said, Boyertown Elementary needs to be upgraded now. We can't have kids in that school with coats on in the winter. So looking at that, we have to have somebody come in and do the roof, correct, Mr. Shield?
So looking at Boyertown Elementary, the way the roof was constructed, it's it's low R values, so the strength of the roof is not absolutely guaranteed to support the weight of new equipment. So I have asked for a roofing company to come out and do a tensile strength on the roof before we would look at putting equipment up there. But it has to be done in nicer weather, it can't be done in the cold.
So we're looking at $4 million there. 4 million. That's just for the roof. That's not.
It's on the, it was on the, it was in the minus report.
That's not, but it needs to be done now. We can't wait.
It can be done tomorrow.
We can't wait.
Well, he just said you have to wait.
Well, I.
I'm just, listen.
I understand that part of it, but we can't wait till next year to do it.
Nobody said you had to get everyone going on.
So.
You're in charge of facilities, bring the facilities issues to us.
I'm bringing them right here, right now.
Yeah, now. Now you have.
I'm bringing them to show you that we.
Now's not the time for that. Now we're talking about turf. You have to talk about turf.
But if we don't have the money to do these things, how can we do turf?
Are you proving to me that we don't have the money to do it or to the board as they will help right now that we don't have the money to do it because of the $4 million roof?
There's more than $4 million roof.
There's $12 million, $61,400 in projects total for the upcoming next five years. If you add the 7 million, which is way above what we would ever pay for turf fields, that would put us at. That would leave us with all said and done with 4.8 million in our fund.
Well, right now, I'm just looking at the 3 million that's.
I'm just giving you everything.
The 3 million that's on the project right now.
I just gave you everything.
No, that's not everything.
It is.
I'm looking at you have.
Unless you're privy to information that the board doesn't have, it is.
I've been looking at things on here.
That that we're not privy to?
You should be.
What, do you know what she's talking about? Are you talking about what?
What was reviewed this week?
Yes.
With the facilities.
Well, some of it.
Some of it. So that's information that was just reviewed with Ms. Nyman and Mr. Upda Grove. It will be brought to the full board.
So we haven't been privy to it, that's what I just said.
Well, the 3 million that's already on from Patty's budget thing, so that brings that down to 20 million, correct? If you take that 3 million off.
You spend it tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. 1.4 million for New Hanover's roof.
It's 13629.
Well, let's round.
I got all the numbers right here.
Okay, let's round. So that gets us down to 18.6. 7 million for Boyertown for the roof and for the HVAC system.
We have as definitive numbers?
It's probably pretty close.
4 million for the roof is more definitive.
Okay.
But we were looking.
You can't speculate, we need a raw number here.
26 units. So just say 7 million for for everything.
You can't, you have to, you can't speculate. I'm not speculating. When you have a definitive number, then you could add it to the.
What was the number that we had for six units?
Six units and 7,000, that wasn't with electric and everything else, that was just the unit cost.
So 307,000 and then another almost 200.
No, no, no. That was only for six rooms. There was 26 rooms over there.
You were still not exceeding the money, so get to the point.
So we're we're about down to 11.6. We have Cobirdale who needs a roof at some point. We have Middle School East for 3.6 million.
Mm-hmm. It's all on the list.
So we're 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 down.
I put it all on the list.
How how are we going to recoup this? This is taxpayer dollars that put this in and it's going to be taxpayer dollars to replenish it again.
These are the lowest taxes that have that have been over the last eight years.
And I know people who are selling homes.
Since Brophy was the finance committee, that and that's when Ms. Danicola got here, tax were at 3%. They've been 3% every time since. The past four years before that, they were higher than that every single time. These are the lowest taxes they've ever been and our fund has gone from when Ms. Danicola got here from 5.8 million to 23 million. So the lowest taxes ever and the highest amount ever put in there.
So you want to take.
That's because she's done an amazing job.
She is doing an amazing job, but there is no guarantee she can. There's no guarantee she can replenish that money.
Were you worried about replenishing it when we were at 6 million in 2019? I bet you didn't even know it was in there.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did?
We were closing a school in 2019. We were well aware where our money was at. So you weren't here.
I wasn't.
You didn't fight through that.
You're right.
We were left with a mess by previous administration.
In 2019, we raised it to 3.64.
We had to close a school and lay off teachers. So if you want to talk about 2019, go to your history book first and figure out what you're talking about.
Well, I just got the numbers, that's all I care about. That's all anybody cares about.
No, it's not.
This is what we're raising taxes. That's what everyone thinks. People were being misled. Yeah, misleading.
On what?
When people write us emails that are stating, I heard you guys are going to raise our taxes to pay for this. That's that's misleading. That's not true.
How you how you putting the money back in the capital fund?
Wait, did you, when you raised our taxes 3%, when you were the finance committee, did you do that for this fund?
I did it for the district based on what's.
And that's what we're doing.
But I wasn't stealing money out of the capital fund.
Who stole money out of the capital fund?
You're about to.
Steal it?
Okay, hold on. I'm talking. Can I come back to me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please. Ms. Danicola, would you want to be down to 4 or 5 million in your capital funds project for the next 10 years? Or would you rather see our turf fields be put into a 10-year project and worked for?
My preference would be that as we have done over the last years, as our expenditures don't come in as what we expect them to be due to COVID-related factors over the last couple of years, such as not being able to fill substitutes, we had to budget as if we were going to fill all our substitute positions. We didn't have the ability to do that. Not ideal for students, but we spent less than what we expected. Build for the future by budgeting each year a transfer to capital reserves so you're never in the position that the district was in when I got here where you had very limited capital reserves. So I think it's important, whatever decisions made tonight on capital projects tonight, capital projects that would be brought, you know, at the March meetings in regards to our roof projects and such, we commit to making sure we consistently build a capital reserve balance so that we can meet the needs of our buildings and we don't defer the maintenance on our on our buildings, which to some respects has occurred, there's been some deferred maintenance on our buildings over the years, that we're trying to correct that. So I think the opportunity here is to take a look at all the projects in front of you, make your decision. Some people vote yes, some people will vote no, but commit to moving forward and building for that future and creating that sustainable future.
To me, I think it's more important to make sure our kids have a school to be in before we go doing a turf field that's not in the projection, the 10-year projection out there. I'm not against turf fields, but put it in the projection and put the maintenance in the projection.
Okay, duly noted. It's noted.
If I if I may, Mr. President, I want to answer Mr. Brophy's question. I've had an opportunity to look at the guidelines of the district and either the presiding officer, in this case, the board president, or a majority of the board can waive the requirements and limitations for the 30-minute time period as well as the number of people to speak. So in my opinion, he exercised his role appropriately.
Hey, thank you. Hold on, we in discussion still or?
No, unless someone has another, it's three minutes, unless someone else has something to add.
So we're about to talk about $7 million that we want to spend.
Mr. Brophy, do you have something to add to this ad?
What's that?
Do you have something to add to the turf discussion?
Put your mic on, please.
I don't think. It might be, I'll try three minutes, let's see if I can do it. So what I heard tonight was, okay, one thing's evident, and I agree, the fields need work. There's some there's some issues with the fields and something needs to be done with them. They need repair. You're asking to move forward to the next steps. What were the original steps?
The feasibility study.
That wasn't a feasibility study. You said, all that was was one, one alternative. You didn't look at any other alternatives, you didn't bring three things or three or four things out to say, here's the different things we can do, there might not be any, but you at least have to bring them forward.
That's what would come with this thing.
No, no, it doesn't. It comes before we move forward. You're moving forward on one option, just one.
That's not true.
What are you moving forward? What are we voting on tonight?
Mr. Sultanic, are we moving forward with this action or is this going to go to proposals from other companies?
No, 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 you're going for one option. You're going for turf fields. One option.
Wait, are you saying you want something other, are you saying?
I'm saying.
No, I don't I don't think you're speaking on the same level. Okay. I think what Mr. Brophy is attempting to say is that the board, by virtue of this action, will go ahead and go for two artificial turf fields, I believe that's the intention, and that what the board's discretion will be is who will be the design team, who will be responsible, and who will develop the specifications for the turf field.
Well, it's a little more than that. It's like, we're we're limiting ourselves to one, one solution. Let me, okay, so we came forward, usually when you want to move forward, there's a couple of things you do. You have a complete scope document, something to move forward to say, this is going to be the scope. Why do I say that's important? Because originally, when the people came in here, it was, the request was for a field for the field hockey team. That was it, one. Next time it came out, it was it was a football field and the field hockey team. That was never discussed, that was all of a sudden, we're doing that. I never heard anybody bring it. I didn't see the, I didn't see football people come in here, I didn't see athletic director come in here, and I certainly didn't hear from the from the administration. I heard it from the board, the board leadership. That's it. So all of a sudden, you changed the scope.
I never changed the scope and said, we got to get two fields.
What are we looking at right now?
Do you see two fields on here? It's not specified. We have to get some pricing.
So so you're saying right now it's not two fields?
I'm saying right now that it's not specified. I'm saying right now that we haven't checked the best.
So in that case, what's the scope? What's the scope you want to move forward on?
Exactly what it says here.
What's the scope? What do you want us to vote to move forward on?
To give Sultanic's group the power.
To do what?
To start getting preparation plans, specifications, projects, assistance with the land development, everything.
For what?
To figure out.
For one or two fields?
For both, then we figure out what we want to do with it.
So it is both fields, you just said, so.
Well, same as the feasibility study, which was.
So you want us, you want me to vote to move forward?
No, you're not going to vote for this move forward.
We're not, we're not going to vote?
You're not going to, you're going to vote no.
Oh, so.
And you're going to vote no.
So. So why do I bother coming if you know my vote?
You're going to vote no because you're getting outside pressure.
I'm not getting any outside pressure.
Sure is. You got the same emails everybody else got. People threatening you're never going to get elected again. I don't, there's no string on me. I don't care.
You know, the last time I listened, I wasn't going to get voted and get elected again? Never. That's your issue, not mine.
No, that's not mine. That's why you didn't vote for Mass. You flat-out said you knew we had to vote. That's why you didn't vote it.
For Mass?
That's exactly what you did.
Voted for Mass? Why did I not vote for, I voted no. I voted to keep Mass on. So...
Yeah, let's get back on.
Just so I understand what we're moving forward with, because I think that is a critical aspect of the vote. If we are to move ahead, does the board want to have who the design team give us pricing on one versus two fields so that the board down the road would have the option based upon cost, actual cost, to have the choice between one and two fields?
Yes. I would say so.
Okay, is that the, okay.
I would agree to that.
I'd go.
Need order here.
Okay, so... Here's how I believe this should have gone on. Since now you have spoken for me, I'll try and speak for myself.
Well, I just gave my opinion.
Well, that's not what you said. That's okay.
Okay.
What should have happened is a little more complex. The administration, upon recognizing the fields had a problem, and there was pressure to get something, should have come forward stating, "Here's some options." It should have come to the board and said, "We need someone to look at our fields and tell us what we need to do to make them top-grade fields." At that point, they would go out and look at the different options. Turf one, repair one. I'm not saying we would do that, but it has to be looked at. Grass fields. Could we put in, could we put in real grass fields and put them in right? We going to do that? I don't know, but we should look at it. You're giving us one and one option only. You're not looking at anything else. This is what you're doing. So...
But if you don't vote for turf, then you take, then that's fine. Then you don't want turf.
If I don't vote for turf, I'm voting for no change in the field.
Well, that's not necessary.
You're letting, you're telling, if I don't vote for turf tonight, then I'm voting to not fix or repair the fields or do anything with them and leave them in the shape they're in. That's the position you've put me in.
That's not true.
It isn't?
If you vote for no on turf fields, and we don't, and this vote fails, can Mr. Palladino not come forward at the next meeting and go, "Hey, listen, tell me something about these fields"?
I don't know. Nobody's come forward anything to me yet. So...
This whole process started back in, I believe it was August. That's when this started being brought forward.
What was the, yeah, we had a discussion on, hey, some people want a turf field. I'll tell you what, in a couple of weeks or a couple of months, when somebody comes in and says, "We have 200 hockey players, and we'd like a hockey rink."
Show me the high school in our area that has a hockey rink of their own.
So you don't want to be the first?
I do. Let's do it.
Well, let's do it. Let's go in, we'll put a hockey field. We'll put a hockey rink in too. That's only not a three or four million.
Let's get a pool too.
You're throwing 7 million bucks out there like it's nothing.
No, no.
You're not?
No.
Okay.
Because that's not going to be the number. Because we don't have the number yet. Because we don't have who's going to do it.
So you're going to guarantee me it's not going over 7 million?
I'll tell you, that's.
You still ask. You're going to guarantee me that. So if it goes over 7 million, you're not going to come back to the rest of the board and ask for a run-in?
I think definitely you might have to look at one field.
So we are looking at two fields, and that's...
We already said that.
So we have no scope?
Well, you got to get people in here to give us the scope.
Well, you got to, you got to come up with a plan of what you're really doing for us too.
Well, I'm ready to vote.
I'm not. Let me go, let me go with the one other thing on turf fields I am going to say, because I heard a lot of things about turf fields tonight that I didn't cover. So what you're asking me to vote for is probably the most expensive, environmentally unfriendly, and toxic material to put down on our fields. That's what you're asking me to do.
Nope.
There are studies out there right now, many of them, that say it's a possibility that there's, that there's issues with turf fields. So in our school district, every time safety comes up, we all of a sudden defer to the safest possible thing to do. We'll actually look at everything. We'll environment, we'll check it out. We'll decide what it is, and then we'll move on. In this case, we're ignoring anything out there that says it's not safe. And we're just going to move forward because you want a turf field.
I want a turf field? I don't have any daughters.
Let me go back to a meeting. The first time I come in, one of the, one of the people came in and said, "We'd like to do a turf field." Your answer was, "Thank you for saying that. I've been trying to get that since I've been here."
Oh, yeah. I worked with them. Because I want what's best for the school district.
You want a turf field.
They would say it would be. Now, I can't speak for them, but we're welcome to ask them.
You're welcome to, I tell you what, that's a great idea. It was put out here earlier tonight. Instead of voting on it tonight, why don't we ask the administration to go with legal and see if we can put this on a ballot as a ballot issue?
Why would you?
And let the entire, and let the entire voting block of the 55,000 people.
Is that what you typically do when it's coming out of our fund? It's not, we're not going to.
Our fund? It's not our fund. It's the people's fund. It's the voters' fund.
We don't need bonds for it.
I didn't ask you.
It's not going to.
We can vote to put that out there. I, you, I can't force it, but I can ask, I can ask.
We already had the motion, so I'm ready to vote. I don't know. No, that's it. We're done.
You're done?
We're done.
I have a question.
You've had questions.
You can't just tell people they can't.
You have three minutes, and you've definitely gone over the three minutes. You've got three minutes.
You have no more rights than I have.
You've been over it. Mr. Brophy's been over it. You both went over the time limit.
You have no more rights than I have.
Does it not say that? It says it in the policy.
I'm sorry.
Our policy does limit.
And I've given you more than that.
Comments.
Comments, not questions.
Yes.
I just wanted to know where the money tree was, and he said it's not going to affect, it's not going to, the money's not going to come from the taxpayers.
I'm telling you that if you.
You made that statement the last time. I wanted to know where your money tree is.
It's the same statement now. If you don't raise taxes 3%, we'll go 5 million to hold. If we go 5 million to hold, we still would have the money to put the fields out there, because one does not correlate to the other.
Where is the money coming from?
What money?
It's not taxpayers' money.
It comes from the capital fund.
That's taxpayers' money.
Is it, are we raising taxes to fund the field?
That is taxpayers' money. What's wrong with you?
Are we raising taxes right now to do the field?
That's on the question.
That is the question, because that's what everyone keeps emailing.
No, it's not.
Yes.
No, it's not. You said we're not using taxpayers' money. What money are you using?
I just told you the capital project fund.
That is taxpayers' money. How do you think it got there?
Through COVID, through attrition, because you guys aren't.
And that's not taxpayers' money?
You've made your statement. You have something else to add?
Yeah. Why can't we have a ballot? Why can't we have a, a, let the community decide? Why should us nine people be the ones to?
Because that's what you were charged with when you were elected.
Why can't we have the community? This is.
Because that's what you were charged with when you were elected.
Well, I didn't lie to the people and say I wasn't using taxpayers' money either.
Oh, I said, "We're not raising taxes for it." That's what I said.
Watch the video. I checked it four times.
I said, "We're not raising taxes for this. One does not correlate to the other." And that was stated by the CFO. Mr. Lott, you have something to add?
Raise it. Who cares?
This is crazy.
All right. The other thing that we seem to have forgotten, it is on. So we've had, I have personally had conversations with our two representatives, our senator and our House of Representatives. There is funded money in there for water, especially for water issues and EPA. They feel there's $2 to $3 million there that can be used. I understand that since this has been started, that every coach in this, in our group has said they're going to go out and do everything they can to raise money. So I'm challenging you to do the same thing that you promised. There is, we've got, we've had people that have contacted me or other board members about starting to knock on doors of business people. When the stadium was built, I was one of those business people that wrote a significant check. And I know exactly how great this town, this community is for helping people. So we're looking at the top max of $7 million, with the understanding that there should be significantly more money coming in from our government. And also, there may be some, depending on how the legislation votes, and we do this every year, we have to provide a budget before we even have a clue what the state or federal government gives us. So we're sitting here, it's not a crapshoot. We have a very good CFO. She's very consistent on the way she budgets this stuff, and it's been pretty good for the last four years how she's hit the numbers on consistently. And she has told me, okay, and Tony, during finance meetings as well as leadership meetings, that we will not have to raise taxes for these fields. We will, you know, whatever it needs to be raised will be for money that will go for our students and the education. It was, it was spoke last time by Mr. Sultanic that this money can only be used for capital improvements. So the school district can go broke tomorrow, but this $23 million cannot go towards saving the school district. So yes, we have roofs. We've been budgeting. We, if we, if you break down each account, I mean, I got asked a que, I made a statement the other day about Pine Forge, the amount of money, and I was told, "Where'd you pull that one out of?" Okay? Well, if you look, that's what we basically had put in for Pine Forge to bring it back up to date if we wanted to do that. So at this point, I would like to see us keep, go forward, okay? It comes down to now nine of us, and whichever way we speak, that's the way it goes. If it wants to be brought up to leadership or through our solicitor, that you guys want to possibly run something in a, you know, put it on the, on the, for voting publicly, that's up to the solicitor, the superintendent, and leadership to decide which way we want to go.
Well, actually, no. The decision to go for referendum has to be a decision of the board. I don't make that decision. The board leadership doesn't make that decision. The superintendent doesn't make that decision. That is a decision that the board would have to vote on following a time period under the circumstances. So I think we need to clarify that. And if we're going to use sources other than the capital reserve fund, the motion that you have before you speaks to raising funds from the capital reserve fund. That's the direction you're giving Ms. D'Nikola and the administration in terms of how to fund the project.
Apologize for misinformation.
This is basically for Nick. Supposedly, we get a field in. How do you regulate who gets to use that field first and when?
We'd have to come up with a schedule, almost just like we do for our indoor facilities, because we have more teams than we have facilities. It will be a rotating schedule based upon scheduled games, based upon scheduled practices, and then, you know, incorporating the marching arts, incorporating field hockey, soccer, to making sure everybody gets an equal amount of time.
Yes.
While you're up there, Mr. Palladino. So we get one turf field, and we have all these different players that want to be on it. What's the chances of us renting that out at any time?
It'd be hard to say right now without making a mock schedule. If everything goes according to plan, there are days and times where we will not be on it, that we could rent it out. But a lot of it's dependent on if we do have any, any type of reschedules, if we're, depending on who, if we're getting varsity and JV on that field. If we have one field, there will be games on turf. There will be games on grass, because we're going to try to not reschedule as many games as possible. We're not going to move, say, for example, field hockey and soccer both play on Tuesdays and Thursdays right now.
So the likelihood of renting it out is virtually none?
No. We could be, depending, right, certain times when we're not practicing. A lot of times on the weekends we're not here.
Between practicing and games, where is there going to be time for anybody else to be on there?
Certain days where, like, for example, Tuesday, Thursdays, if girl soccer's playing at home, boy soccer's playing away. Field hockey might be playing away. So right then, we only have one to two games on that field. We'll be done on there by 6:30. So from that point on, all of our other teams all had away games. All of our practices are finished. Pretty much, if we say we don't have lights, then it's just amount to the amount of daylight that we have. If we have lights, we can run it out to an infinite amount of time.
What would be the rental on the field?
That would be something that we need to, you know, look at with, with the facilities committee and depending on, you know, what they do. I don't even know the number right now that we rent Memorial Stadium for.
We're paying about $190 an hour, $190 to $210 an hour for a turf field right now.
No, it won't be falling on the sawdust.
So Ms. Nyman, I just want to address too, we need to think about the entire summer or our, none of our high school teams will be playing on it. We could rent it out for camps, leagues, clinics, anything.
I just want to say that when I played, I was able to play soccer on turf when I was in high school, so it's time.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Quick question. Give me a connection in a second.
Mr. Zawada and Mr. Panarello? That's okay. Mr. Zawada?
Even though there's been petty threats at me thrown by, and some of the other board members, I'm proud to vote yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I have to go with the constituents that voted me in and say no.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, the administration recommends the board of school directors approve the overnight trip to Blue Ridge High School, Milford, Pennsylvania, as presented.
Mr. Panarello?
Seconds.
I have a motion from Mr. Panarello with a second from Mr. Zawada.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, for the board of school directors to approve the maneuvering the middle for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math program as presented.
Zawada moves.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, for the board of school directors to approve the eMath instruction program as presented.
On the eMath.
Is that something that's mandated by the Pennsylvania Education Association?
In a roundabout way, it is, because it's aligned with the standards and what our realignment with our trigger courses are. So it's a supplemental resource that goes along with middle school and high school geometry. So it aligns with what the state is asking us to do. The program itself is not state-mandated, but the content that is taught in that program is based upon state standards.
And then the teachers have to be taught that, to teach that?
The teachers, the teachers would have, it's, it's an all-encompassing, where it provides lessons and resources for our teachers to use to supplement what they teach in their classroom.
So I read the motion. I just do not have a first or a second.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the board of school directors to approve the following policies, 137, 137.1, 137.2, and 137.3 for first reading, and move them forward to the March 12th, 2024 Board of School Directors Meeting for Second Reading Approval. Just as a reminder, this, these particular policies were updated to recognize students who may be in foster care. I'm sorry, these are homeschool policies that are recognizing the language that has to do with changes in school code as well as legal liability.
I have a question, a comment. I'd like to table the vote on this. We put on the policies that were put forth by the policy committee and not by administration until we get an answer from the solicitor. Yes, I know there's an executive session canceled for later tonight, but we're doing things backwards again. So I would like to table this vote.
That's not, that's not one of these.
Till we get answers.
That's not one of these ones. That's not one of these.
Okay, so... These are all ones administration put forth?
Yes. These, these are recommended updates.
So you're withdrawing your motion on this aspect. Is that correct?
Yes, I withdrew.
Zawada moves.
Yeah, we're going to.
I, I made the motion. I don't have a first or a second. Zawada?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the board of school directors to approve the following policies, 200, 202, 204, 216.1, 217, 221, 233, and 810 for first reading, and move them forward to the March 12th, 2024 Board of School Directors Meeting for Second Reading Approval. These policies are for enrollment of students, eligibility of non-resident students, attendance, supplemental discipline records, which is a new policy, graduation, dress and grooming, suspension and expulsion, transportation. These policies are being recommended to be updated for legal liability and are mandated policies. The language change in each of these policies is to address students specifically experiencing foster care and other forms of educational instability.
I'll motion.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next motion is for the School Board of Directors to approve Policy 006.1 for first reading and move it forward to March 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Second Reading Approval.
This is the one you want to motion on?
I'll make a decision to table the vote.
So, Mr. Sultanic, do you need the majority to do that? A motion to table, yes. Okay, so, we can go to vote? Yes. Do we need a motion and a second? I'll first. There's typically no discussion on a motion to table. A vote of yes will table the motion. A vote of no will not table the motion.
We understand that this is to table the vote on Policy 006.1.
Mrs. Scott?
No.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
No.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
No.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
No.
Motion carries.
The Board of School Directors to approve Policy 105.2 for first reading and move it forward to the March 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Second Reading and Approval.
I'll motion.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The Board of School Directors to approve Policy 214 for first reading and move it forward to the March 12 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Second Reading.
I'll move.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then, for the Board of School Directors to approve Policy 01 for the first reading and move it forward to the March 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Second Reading Approval. The, this policy has already been made, the changes have been made as addressed by Mrs., Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Kramer is following our meeting and has made the corrections and had pushed them forward out to us. So, it is already addressed.
Looking for a motion and a second.
What's changed?
Yes.
It is, it is not, let me.
I can pull this up. She, the way that it's reading right now is Boyertown Area School District is organized to provide proportionate representation according to population. This is accomplished by means of the creation of three regions with three board members from each region as followed. Region 1, Boyertown Borough, voting Region 1. Bechtlesville Borough, Washington Township, voting Precincts 1 and 2. Bally Borough, Colbrugdale Township, voting Precincts 1 and 2, and Earl Township, voting Precincts 1 and 2. Region 2, Boyertown Borough, voting Precinct 2. Douglas Township, voting Precincts 1 and 2 of Berks County, and Douglas Township, voting Precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Montgomery County. And Region 3, New Hanover Township, Districts 1, 2, and 3, and Upper Frederick Township.
I think that's right.
She did follow the solicitor's write-up after the census by accident. Something was cut off, and this is how it has been presented from Fox Rothschild.
Ask her just to send it to me and I'll verify.
I will push, I will, I will forward this email to you.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
I have requested, and I know everyone's busy, but I have requested that. I'm sorry, that we see a total of what has been spent in virtual, and in fact, I had requested that probably over a year or so ago as well, to have a running total of our personnel agenda so that we, and I think other board members have brought that up as well, so that we can, as a board, you know, look at the running total and then look at these additions that are put on. Because if you get to this time of year, we really don't know unless we go back to every sheet and sit there and have to add everything up ourselves. I don't understand how an Excel program, I'm assuming this is in Excel, so it's not a difficult thing to do. I realize when you have to go back, it is time consuming, but I just put it forward to administration and to Human Resources that if the board agree that we could keep a year-to-date total of this personnel agenda and add, you know, once it's been approved, mark the date of approval for that section. I don't know how it would be set up, but a year-to-date, if there's legal things, I don't know about those. But, year-to-date is important as a board member to see these running totals, and we just don't see them. And it's hard to approve something when you don't have all the information and you want it, so.
Well, the Treasurer's Report does break down what is salaries year-to-date, what the total budget is for the year, what is salary, salary-to-date, what the personnel benefits are, what contracted services are.
Right.
So, that's presented monthly on the Treasurer's Report. If I recall correctly, I believe I heard that it was in relation to virtual academy.
Right. Is that separate, separated out of that?
Included as part of that overall total. I know Mary Beth was working with the HR Department to have them run a report out of our system, that they could run a report, but to run a report on every single pay code we have would be beyond.
I, I, I get that, but is it hard to, if, when you ask for one, to just get a total for that one? So, you have an idea?
You could, yeah, the HR Department could print a total year-to-date.
Okay, because that's all I was asking for.
But it would only be good for that date and time.
Right, I know. I understand that. Okay, thank you.
I think what, at a minimum, I think, and I'm not sure if we already do this on the personnel agenda, if it's a new position that's not currently established within the district, I think it would be acceptable for that to be, you know, just marked on the personnel agenda, that this is a new position. It would be a budgetary add. We haven't had that happen. We haven't had, had to add positions. We've replaced retirement, so those positions would already be in the budget. But, we most certainly can update to, you know, put a mark if it's an addition to the budget.
Okay, and some of the other reasons why it would be good is we have those that are paid by the hour, and I think that's where we get a little stumped because they're not always consistent, and I know there's reasons for it, but being able to look back and see consistent, you know, this is what we do, kind of thing, that, that helps as well. So, I, I just feel that there's, there's, for me, when I look at the personnel agenda as we move forward and we're looking at more coaches coming and looking at all these expenses, I'm not questioning that we don't need them. I just like to know what the bottom line is. That's all.
So, I'm not clear on what you are requesting, Mrs. Scott. My understanding is that you were looking for virtual teachers for our Boyertown virtual program.
I was looking for a total for the virtual academy to date.
Okay.
That, what we have put in to date.
Okay.
That's all I was asking for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public Tom Period Number Two, John Emy.
Okay, you've taken us down this road. Like I said, I'm not against turf. I'm in favor of turf. I think kids should have where we can get them. What I did not hear was anything that made me feel confident that we have anything remotely approaching a plan to make sure that we continue on our current projections of budgets and tax increases that aren't going to go much higher. What I heard was, we managed to do it this time because we couldn't hire subs, and yeah, that hurt children, but hey, you know, I heard, yeah, there was some COVID-related stuff. Well, yeah, that's probably not going to happen again. That's kind of out of plan. That's kind of luck. And from my own studies, I've seen that in 2019, we had 511 professional personnel on staff, and today we have 477.5. So, we've had an attrition of about 7% of our professional staff, and that's not including the payers going. We lost Pine Forge. We have increased class sizes. I don't know about you, but I don't call that doing a good job. I call that staying afloat barely. So, what I'm hoping to see, and I'm hoping to see it not from hearing Mr. Zawada and Mr. Panarello, so Mrs. Denicola told us, she's, she told us in private meetings that we can do this. When we have a budget meeting this time, I'd love to see this plan laid out in detail for the public to examine. I'm not doing this because I'm upset that you passed turf. I'm doing it because you made a promise that you could do this, maintain everything we've got, maybe even improve what we've got, and not raise taxes. I want to see that in writing. And if you can't do it, then this was all political theater tonight, and I hope, I hope there are some people that are left in the room that know that. And I really, really don't want to come here.
I want to correct you one second.
Yeah.
So, we actually said, the proposal from Mr. Denicola was that we were going to be raising taxes.
Well, sorry, we won't raise taxes above our projections. You, you essentially promised that you could continue to do things the way we've always been doing them. Well, and then you talked about a lot of things that are either not going to happen again or actually not very good. So, I like to see this plan. I like to see it in budget meetings. I like to see budget discussions take a little bit longer than a grand total of 35 minutes like they did last year. And I'm not angry at you. I'm challenging you to do this. You made the promise. I want to see it kept, and I want to see it kept to the public. That's about all for tonight. I'll talk about other stuff later. Thank you.
Ms. Savage?
Separate topic again, about advocating for public education at the state level. So, do you care about the burden of property taxes on vulnerable homeowners in our community? I know that you do. Do you want to see the quality of education in Boyertown continue to improve? And do you believe that having a well-educated populace has a positive impact on our community, our nation, and the world? If you answered yes to any of these questions, then listen up because we can do better in Pennsylvania by advocating. One year ago this month, a Pennsylvania judge ruled that the state funding for public education is unconstitutional because, one, it is inadequate, meaning the pie is too small, and, two, it's inequitable, meaning the pie is not cut fairly. Did you know that Pennsylvania ranks 46th in the U.S. with regard to the share provided by the state for education? That means that in Pennsylvania, local property taxpayers have a big bill compared to those in other states. And did you know that in districts with a lot of wealth and business infrastructure, they can afford to pay much, much more per student while maintaining a low property tax millage, while districts in poor areas cannot even raise enough taxes to heat their schools? So, as a result of the judge's ruling, a bipartisan Basic Education Funding Commission was formed, and they spent most of 2023 traveling around the state, listening to experts in order to come up with a plan which was unveiled in January. It's a seven-year plan to achieve a constitutional public education funding situation. It increases the pie size, the adequacy, and slices the pie more fairly or equitably. This month, Governor Shapiro unveiled his proposed Pennsylvania budget focusing mainly on public education, and his education proposal nearly mirrors what was proposed for Year 1 by the, by the BEF Commission. Now, it goes through the House and Senate. If passed, Boyertown would receive a 13.8% increase in basic education fund, which you heard from Patty last week, or nearly $2.6 million to both make our pie bigger of state funding and also to acknowledge that our district is one that they recognize that has an undue burden on property taxes, the equity. This money, this year and over the next seven years, will help improve education at Boyertown and can also help temper property tax increases. So, in addition, shifting the tax burden to state income taxes relieves the burden on the most vulnerable taxpayers. Unfortunately, the partisan politics have begun. There's too much to say in three minutes, but I'll be back, and it's easy to find information on this. In fact, there was an article in last week's version of our Boyertown Times, and it appears that it was probably also in the Mercury and the Eagle, if you want to learn more. Thanks for listening.
Word common period. Ms. Updegrove?
No, no comment.
Ms. Nyman?
We hear from our student representatives, but they never share anything that's going on with our elementary schools. So, I guess I'll share some things. March 9, Washington Elementary is having a purse bingo. April 13, Earl is having a basket raffle. I'm sure the other schools are doing something too, but I have not been able to find that. So, please get out and support our PTAs, PTOs, whatever they are. All of that money raised goes back to our students. Question for Mr. Sultanic. With the motion that was made for the turf fields tonight, that is not a guarantee that we are going to do them. Is that correct? That's just for you to draw things up and?
It's preparing to prepare.
So, will it still come back for another motion from us?
There will be motions down the road to engage an architect, determine the scope of the project, and deal with the actual letting of bids and the construction documents that'll be necessary for the implementation of whatever project ultimately evolves.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Lexi and Liliana for their board reports, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, sometimes when you have these meetings and people speak, you find things out. I still can't get over the fact that we got sawdust on our football fields. Or, what?
I can't hear. It's on.
I said, sometimes when you have these meetings, you find things out, and I was appalled to find out that we're allowing even to have sawdust put on the field so the kids don't fall in holes. This goes from having fields that we got awards for, prestigious awards from the state, and look at them now. How did this happen? And the other thing is, it's probably going to rain tomorrow, uh, snow tomorrow because this is the first time I'm going to agree with Mr. Emy. Thank you.
Mrs. Duroff's motion to shelf the one policy, can we still pursue options to get better units involved or speakers for people who are calling in from home and things like that so we don't have anyone at a disadvantage that wouldn't impact any of us anyway?
I did identify, I did, I'm trying to press, but everybody has theirs on yet. All right. All right. Well, then I guess I'm not working properly here. So, anyway.
Well, then I guess I'm not working properly here. So anyway, I'll talk really loud. I did identify that we do have a conference.
We do have a conference calling mechanism. I did find it, and it will be put into place each time that we have someone that would not be able to be present. That I don't have an answer for, Mr. Brophy, but it is something that I can certainly speak to the IT department about and see if we can't put something as a permanent fixture. Now, when we move, you know, to building to building, obviously, it's not easy to transfer, but. Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Sultanic, when you go out and you put your stuff out for bidding on a turf field, do they go do the soil testing right away before any other work's being done?
We're going to have to look at the scope of services that whoever's going to help us do the technical specs, but it would seem to me we want to do the soil study upfront so we know what we're looking at under the circumstances. It would seem to me that that would be a prudent determination.
All right, upcoming meeting dates, we have our upcoming Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is March 12, 7 o'clock. This meeting will be at Middle School East. And then we have our voting meeting. These meetings are back-to-back, March 12 and March 19 will be our vote, our Board of School Directors' meeting. This will be at the Education Center. There's not a break in our meetings this time for March due to the spring break. So there we go.
We're going to have an executive session now that is going to deal with consultation with the solicitor on board policy.